It's 2023 Board of Supervisors for the County of Lake. We're going to call this meeting to order. We're going to start with a moment of silence. We can honor our wonderful example of a servant, a public servant, and a leader, past First Lady Rosalynn Carter. And then we've got a moment of silence from Supervisor Crandall.
Yes, elder from Scotts Valley Band of Pomo Indians, Joyce Arnold. She's also the daughter of Vice Chairman Jesse Gonzalez and Miguel Gonzalez of Scotts Valley. She passed on November 17th. The funeral was yesterday. She leaves behind lots of grandchildren, lots of family. She's not only a member of Scotts Valley, but she has connections to Hoplin, Redwood Valley, Coyote Valley, Round Valley. So like a lot of elders have these connections. She also was a very renowned basket maker as well. And so our Pomo community loses another one of those resources. So yeah, I'd like to offer a moment of silence for Joyce and her family.
Wendy, would you like to lead us in the pledge?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Do we have any extra items not appearing on the posted agenda?
I do not have any extra items.
Okay. We'll move to approve the consent agenda. Is there, are there any items that need to be pulled? Any, does the public, public have any items that they'd like to pull? Not seeing any in the Zoom room. So I will close the public and bring it back to the board for action.
Madam Chair, I move to approve the consent agenda as proposed.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes. And it looks like we'll have a couple of minutes before our next timed item. So we have, we can go to 7.4. Consideration of the following Advisory Board Appointment: Emergency Medical Care Committee. And this is to appoint Najia Sadiq to EMCC. Any comments?
Yeah, I'd just like to point out a, I'm sure it's an inadvertent error on the staff memorandum saying that this would be an appointment to first five Lake County. But I do believe the agenda itself is captioned appropriately and the appointment would be made to EMCC. So on that understanding, I would-
I'm going to open it up to the public first. Any comments from the public? Anyone in the Zoom room? Okay, then I will bring it back to the board for action.
Move to approve Najia Sadiq as a member of the Emergency Medical Care Committee, assigned to a seat for, it looks like EMS representative?
I think it's hospital representative.
Yeah, this is a complicated committee. I don't have the roster in front of me, so I don't have all the categories in front of me.
I know that's what it says on the application is hospital representation. Not sure if that's-
Okay.
The appropriate term.
The ER?
ER representative or hospital?
ER affiliated medical. Because we don't have any, we don't have any for that category. And she, she said that she-
So E, what's the, what's the category name?
ER affiliated medical care coordinator.
All right, so moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, motion passes. And we will go to our 9:06 item, public input. We have anyone in the chambers who'd like to give public input? Anyone in the Zoom room?
I don't know if this is appropriate time, but-
Sure, come on up to the microphone if you've got, are you here to speak on anything that's on the agenda?
Yes, on the, the funding for the Pomo statue.
It passed, consent.
Oh.
It was on consent.
Bye.
Thank you so much for joining us today. Okay, then I will close public comment and we can move on to our star of the morning, Gizmo, our 6.2907 a.m. pet of the week. Gizmo, you're up.
Sorry, I couldn't hear you over her. Good morning, my name is Officer Haley Downey. Now I'm with Lake County Animal Care and Control. With me this morning is my very talkative partner, Gizmo. Gizmo is an eight-week-old pit mix puppy. She is completely brindle and white. Gizmo has been in the foster with a couple of our employees, including myself, for the last three and a half weeks. Gizmo is officially available for adoption. We have had her in homes with both cats and large dogs. She gets along with small dogs that we've had in our office. We think that she'd do really well in just about any environment. We've also started already working on her potty training and that kind of stuff. That being said, she still is a puppy, so there will still be some new hiccups. But we have already started working on that for whoever decides to adopt her. If anybody wants to come and meet Gizmo, she's currently hanging out in our front office at 4949 Hellbush Drive. Or if somebody would like to request an application, they can go ahead and give us a call, 707-263-0278.
Well, thank you for joining us and thank you for fostering. I know that's above and beyond your job description.
I had her for two weeks and now another employee has her and she's doing way better than I did, so.
Thank you so much.
Have a wonderful day.
All right. 6.3, our 9:08 a.m. item. Presentation of proclamation commending Billy Roberson for heroic actions in saving the life of a teenager at Lakeport Unified School District. And I'm going to have Wendy come up with me.
Whereas Billy Roberson is a deputy probation officer assigned as a school resource officer at Lakeport Unified School District. And whereas on November 14th, 2023, in the course of his duties, he was made aware of a teenager who had lost consciousness, stopped breathing, and appeared to be suffering from an overdose. Whereas not only he took immediate action and heroic action to provide for the teenager's medical needs by administering Narcan, but ensured emergency medical personnel were called and that the scene was sufficiently controlled so that emergency medical personnel would immediately be able to take any necessary additional action upon their arrival. And whereas actions like those taken by Deputy Probation Officer Roberson go well beyond the bounds of his usual job duties and his insightful and immediate work had immeasurable and life-altering effects on not only the teenager, but all of those connected to her. And whereas this display of decisive and heroic behavior under great pressure is a shining example for all Lake County residents and the effects of it will be felt socially and economically for years to come. Now therefore, be it proclaimed that the Lake County Board of Supervisors does hereby commend Deputy Probation Officer Billy Roberson for his remarkable insight and efforts in saving a life. And by virtue of this recognition, extend the deep and heartfelt thanks of Lake County communities to Officer Roberson for his great professionalism and extraordinary service. Passed and adopted this 28th day of November, 2023.
We wanted to bring you in here. You, your, your actions are legendary around the county and you have changed the life of one person, their family, given this person a second chance. And we have incredible staff that work here in Lake County and in the probation department, and you are a shining example of that. And we just want to express our sincerest gratitude for this. Thank you.
I just, I just want to say thank you to everybody else. If it was anybody else put in my position at probation, they would have done the same thing. So like I said, I just want to say thank you to everybody at probation.
He's right, we do have an incredible team at probation and he's just one shining example of that. And we appreciate everything you do every day, Billy. Thank you. All right. Anyone from the public? Any comments from the team? Now we're going to take a picture. Anyone from the board?
So real quick, I just want to talk about the importance of having a student resource officer in our schools. The fact that probation has been providing SROs for, I don't know how many years, but since I've been here, that's been the case, is amazing. And I hope that we can continue doing that. There are certain schools that still require filling a position. It's difficult to already staff our departments, let alone find SROs. But I just want to highlight the importance of having those individuals in our school sites to provide not just a connection with the youth, but also to provide the help and assistance when it's needed at the time of most importance. So thank you very much for being there. Thank you for your actions and great job.
Thank you. Just wanted to say, you know, good work. And it's very hard to come by these days for people that want to serve. So not just you, but all of you here. A lot of people don't want to do this work anymore. It's, it's just very, you know, rare for people to, you know, serve their community with either probation or law enforcement or anything of that nature. And so I, you know, I appreciate your humility, but you did do a great thing. And that lets me know too, what kind of person you are with the hum, you know, the humbleness that you bring. And so with so many people passing from this, you know, this epidemic, you know, it's just, we're grateful to have you all in these schools and on the streets to help with this, you know. So a lot of people just want to record and hang out and watch and then post it and then point a finger at somebody who didn't do something. So you stepped to the, to the plate. Thank you and thank you all.
And if I can just add, we're here to celebrate you today and this proclamation does that. And congratulations on a job well done. But I think one question I may have later down the road is, thank goodness we had Narcan available in trained hands to administer. And so I think there's probably a success story I can take out of that, but there may be additional policy work that we need to get Narcan in more hands and more people that aren't trained probation officers necessarily and stuff like that. So I just want to take that as, this is a powerful example of not just your, you know, your bravery in the, in the sense of administering that, but just a teachable moment that we're unfortunately going to face similar situations on other campuses and in other settings outside the schools. And we all need to get better and understand how Narcan should be made widely available so that it can be applied in an emergency situation very timely. And that's what happened in this instance. So thank you for today's lesson and I do think we have additional lessons down the road to learn.
Yeah, just want to follow up and say thank you very much for your actions. Saving a life is so important in these days and especially with, just as you said, the Narcan. But thank you for acting. Thank you for being who you are. Greatly appreciated.
Forgot it was there.
Thank you all for joining us today. Okay, our 6.4 item, 9:15 a.m. Consideration of Lake County Resource Conservation District's Annual Report. And we have Dr. Lyons. If you'd like to come on up and have a seat here, this way.
Good morning. I'm Harry Lyons and I'm president of the Board of Directors of the Lake County Resource Conservation District. And we are six board members and eight part-time employees who are dedicated to locally-led efforts at sustainable use of our natural resources in Lake County. We are a state special district. Our head is in state, but our heart is in Lake County. And we want to thank you right off the bat, the county, for assisting us and asking for our assistance both. So I did present a slideshow. I did send in a slideshow. Is it available? I also have it in a thumb drive if you need it. I'm going to start. My, my second slide will be on the money. And last year, our situation, our financial situation was so awful that I wandered around trying to learn how to disband a special district, a resource conservation district. I talked to surrounding districts and to the local area agency formation council. And fortunately, no one would help me. And so we struggled along and we're, we're coming out of a financial dip. And so here you'll see on this slide, you'll see our total budget for, for, for the surrounding years. And at 21, 22, we got down to about $150,000. But we have profited from the Inflation Reduction Act and many of the grants that were made available through that and also for fire protection and resilience work. And so our financial situation is looking a little better since I'll have, I want to specifically thank the county and the people of Lake County for the county tax contribution. And so that second column there is a constant input of readily usable dollars. But you can see also that most of our income comes from grants, federal grants, state grants, and contracts with, with the County of Lake. If I can have the next slide? This is the way our programs are organized. Leadership and operations is an important part of our work because we want to increase our capacity. We do watershed programs, soil health management, forest health program, and then fire preparedness and resilience. So I'm going to go through each one of these. And so if I could have the next slide? First, there's leadership and operation. When we found ourselves in a bad situation, we hired some professionals. So what you have is a board of six people, average age well over 70, trying to manage a half-million-dollar business. And to increase our capacity and get to the point where we could hire a full-time executive director, we hired consultants. And the people that found us and we found them were Jade Conservation Collective. And this is an organization of people with decades of experience in running RCDs, Resource Conservation Districts. And I know that Supervisor Pyska and Supervisor Simon have worked with some of the individuals from Jade Conservation Collective, Megan McClure, Kristen Murphy, and Alyssa Robinson. And they helped us build and train our staff. We've taken on more part-time employees. And they have trained our staff, including Alma DePareves, who is our administrative assistant. Alma came on board about a year ago into a sleepy little RCD and has witnessed an increase in her responsibilities and, and the work that's required of her as we have grown. We have looked at partner input and we look forward to hiring a forester and an executive director. In fact, we just approved the, the advertisements for those, for those hires. We look forward to a five-year strategic planning session very soon. Next slide, please. I wanted to talk about the watershed program, which is a longstanding program at the RCD. Most of this was accomplished by Greg Dills, who for decades kept the RCD afloat and cooking, along with Linda John Tunnan, who I'll mention later. Currently, we are working on oak reforestation in Trailside Park in Middletown for Caltrans. We had accomplished last year the 16, 16-acre restoration in Eight Mile Valley. So this was reconstruction of a stream. But we're doing oak reforestation for Caltrans. We're also doing revegetation and fostering, and fostering of native plants for Caltrans on Highway 29. So Trailside Park and Highway 29 work for Caltrans. We are also working from money channeled from the county, from the California Department of Food and Agriculture, for the eradication of Goats rue. And that's not a picture of Goats rue, that's lupin. But Goats rue is also a very pretty plant, but it's a problem. It got that name because it's poisonous to goats. I've chewed on it and it survived, so it's not a goat. The next is a restoration of the wright wetlands. This is a piece of property in Southern Lakeport that we want to restore to its condition as a wetland. We want to save the world one swamp at a time, as my wife says. And we want to thank the Lake County Land Trust for partnering with us in this, this effort. This is money from the Wildlife Conservation Board, which is part of the California Department of Food and Wildlife. And it's being channeled from our statewide Association for Resource Conservation Districts. I want to applaud a member of our working board. That's Mary Jo Velazquez. She's working on this wright restoration. This is Greg Dills, who I mentioned already, Larry Ray, who is our project coordinator, and Scott McLean, who is our field technician. In other words, he's the guy that does the actual work. Next slide shows the health program of the soil. And this is Deep Roots for RCDs. Before we resource conservation districts, we were soil conservation districts. And so it's always good to return in strength to the soil effort. We've joined the North Coast Soil Health Hub. Connected well with other North Coast RCDs. We have soils expertise available to us through Jade. And we have two grants from Conservation Works, which is a nonprofit in the North Coast. We'll be doing some on-farm research and regional demonstrations. And we have, from Clerk then bestowed, a regional conservation planning partnership program that Clerk felt would, that would fit us a little better. So we're going to bend that to some soil work. We also look forward to future contributions to the Lake County Climate Action Plan. Somewhere in there, the RCD will have input so that we can begin carbon farming, carbon plans for farms, for vineyards and for orchards in Lake County. We want to think of soil as something additional to what we traditionally think. I think of it as a carbon sink. So that's where we're headed. Next slide, please. This is a shot of Soda Bay Road where we've been doing some clearing. Our work in forest health program, our recent work, began with the sale of 250,000 conifer seedlings in 2016 and 2020. And the RCD sold these to people replanting in the fire footprint of the valley fires and the fires that followed it. This was a donation of $60,000 from the Lake County Rotary Clubs in this effort, and it was a multi-year effort. Currently, we are doing technical, technical assistance to private owners of forest lands. And technical assistance means management plans. It means monitoring progress of plannings. But it also means assistance in the paperwork and assistance in getting the money from government agencies that are involved with reimbursement of private people. So technical assistance sometimes involves a pen and a pencil. We look forward to future workshops. We have $250,000 coming from the Nat, the Natural Resource Conservation Service. Our local representative for the NRCS is Erica Lundquist. So she's very much involved in this technical assistance work. We also have secured a $375,000 grant for forest health and fire resilience projects from CAL FIRE. The folks doing this work are Thomas Bendor, who is our forester, Kevin Solent, who is a new forester to us and with us for about a year, and Ren Ward, who is a forest technician. Looking over those young foresters is an old forester, Jim Bridges, who is a retired registered professional forester. And he's, he serves on our, on our board. We've put him to work too. Next slide. This is fire preparedness and resilience. This, of course, has become more and more important to the RCD in the last decade. And the person connected with this more than anybody else is, is Lori Hutchison. And Lori Hutchison's work is supported through the county from money from Title III, the National Forest Service. And that is to the tune of about $30,000 a year. We're working on a new contract for that work. This work centers around fulfilling the promise of the CWPP. And the CWPP was produced in part by the RCD and the efforts of Linda John Tunnin. So we wanted to mention her along with Lori Hutchison. Hazard mitigation work and roadside clearing. We just completed a grant, $65,000 grant from PG&E. It is a joy to work with PG&E. They're a corporation and corporations pay much quicker than the government. Much quicker. So it's, so we're finishing that project for PG&E. We are not involved in home hardening, but we trumpet the clause for the grants that involve that on the website for, for the Fire Safe Council. Okay, if I could have the next slide? This is a reminder of what the LCRCD is. It's a special district of the state of California. And so it is not a nonprofit. It is not a corporation. It is not a limited liability concern. It's the government. It's a non-regulatory arm of the government. And we have special relations with federal, state, and county government. We have profited greatly from our standard agreement with Caltrans and we hope to form a standard agreement with CAL FIRE as well as we go forward. And the next slide, wrapping this up, is a list of our partners. And there you have a little lake of acronyms. And they tried to fill those in. The, the thing about our partners is that we would not get very far without them. And we hope in the years ahead that they won't get very far without us. And the, the organization has now some 17 active grants that we're pursuing. And we still keep up with our educational outreach. The Board of Directors has- The Board of Directors has two field days, one in Middle Creek and one in Cache Creek for fourth graders. And scholarships for 12th graders and sophomores in college. And also workshops of various types. This work is accomplished by Shula Shoup, another director, and Kate Schmidt-Hopper. And I help a bit there, too. So we're still reaching out to the community. We're still raising trout in classrooms with the help of our associate director, Tony Blyleven. So trout eggs turn into trout fingerlings in classrooms, in eight classrooms throughout the county. And then the students are involved with releasing them into the natural environment. So we're taking care of the small fry in all types. Thank you for your attention. I hope you have some questions.
I'm so glad you're here today giving this update. You know, when I first came on three years ago, one of the first things we did is sit down together and try and figure out how we were going to grow capacity for the RCD, the Fire Safe Council, and the Risk Reduction Authority. And we went in many, many circular and spiral and messy conversation directions trying to figure this out. And it's, where we are right now is miles away from where we were this time last year and three years ago. And you know, when you made that call to me, I think it was last January, and said, "I found someone" to start working, and that was Megan with JADE. Everything has fundamentally changed. We've partnered on so many grants. And we have so many big plans that some of them we're going to talk about a little later today. I'm just so excited, Dr. Lyons. Your commitment to the RCD and the county, I'm glad you didn't give up. Because we wouldn't be here without you. And I'm just so incredibly grateful for the collaboration we have with all of these partners and that you're always there. And you're always creative and willing to do whatever idea we come up with. You're always on board and want to help. And the staff that we have with JADE and with the RCD now is making huge strides and huge changes and really pushing us in the direction that we have to go to deal with the climate issues that we're seeing on all fronts. So thank you for being here and thank you for continuing the work. I'm incredibly grateful to you.
Thank you. And I want to say that this board that I work with and the employees and the JADE folks are a joy to work with. There is a warmth to our meetings. And so it is fun to continue.
Anyone else? Supervisor Green?
Yeah, I just want to thank you for the excellent presentation. If I were to offer one smallest constructive criticism, it's like, tell us where to find you. Tell us these good things, because I'm going to want to hear more and I'm going to want to drill down to this. So I'm just going to skip. Looks like your website is lakercd.org. As I recall, you may have a small office down at the Ag Department on Lakeport Boulevard. And it looks like the telephone number is 263-4180.
Sounds good.
For general outreach. And there's other contacts on the website. So there is additional information. The slide deck that you just presented would be a lovely addition to that. And so thank you for the presentation. And thank you for all the hard work, not just you, but all your fellow directors on the board.
That's for sure. And keep in mind the directors. And thank you, Supervisor Green.
Supervisor Swiatek.
Dr. Lyons, thank you very much for the presentation. I'm glad you brought up the trout fry at the end. I was going to ask, because usually you bring pictures of the classroom environment. And that started again even post-COVID. That's continuing that project, which is awesome. One of the things that you seem to have glossed over, and I got to ask, you were talking about your struggles with money, but you didn't mention the big million-dollar amount for 2425. Are those prospective dollars on grants that you're looking to obtain? Or do you know if you've already obtained some of these funds for?
We've obtained most of these funds. And it has to do with the APGP program. It has to do with another forest health program and National Association of Conservation Districts. There's bits and pieces coming together. There's no one giant grant, but several different ones.
That's amazing.
Well, what we've been doing is strategically planning out our grants so that we can have the RCD manage projects and thereby build the capacity for the RCD. So a lot of the grants that we've been applying for are layering on each other and helping all of the organizations and partners. So that's why when we have an idea for a grant, everybody comes together. We work on it. We really work on it and make sure that we can have all of our projects and priorities strategic so that we can get the grant award. And then we can have these funding opportunities for the RCD and the Fire Safe Council and next the RRA, which we'll get to a little bit later today. So it's not just one grant for one organization. The RCD has been writing grants for the county over the last year. So you know, we've been really successful through all these partnerships.
We have been very careful about counting our dollars because we want, we're advertising for an executive director and another forester. And so you don't want to hire someone that you don't have money for. In many cases, in the last few months, we have applied for grants with positions, ghost positions. In other words, the people needed to do the work didn't exist. And we were lucky to land the foresters, forest technician, and the administrative assistants. So to me, that's a little scary to ask for work without someone to do it. But so far, we have played that game well. And I'm sure it's a game that you have all played.
Thank you very much.
Supervisor or Vice Chair Simon?
I just would like to thank you, Harry, and the RCD for all the work that's being done. And always, when I came on board and we started a lot of these conversations, the big conversation was the CWPP. And you kind of glossed over that today. I know the dollars are important, but CWPP being completed, updated, and moving forward really helps us, as you said, even in the grants that Lori's working on and everything, you know, following through on what needs to be done here in Lake County as far as the CWPP. So that was a very big accomplishment. And it is a collaboration effort. You've attended every RRA meeting as RCD representative as we move through these processes. We have our Climate Resiliency Officer. And to see the collaboration and the coordination that's happened is, it's exciting. We're almost there. We've got a lot more work to do, but we're moving in the right direction. So I just want to thank you. From day one, when I got to take my tour with you as a supervisor, understood your commitment to the county and the organization that you're a part of and all your board members. Just want to thank you very much and thank you for the report today.
Well, thank you.
Okay, I want to open it up for the public. Looks like we've got someone here.
Hi, good morning. Is this on? Okay. Terry Logston, Chief Climate Resiliency Officer and Tribal Liaison. And I've worked with Dr. Lyons and the RCD for a number of years. I did not realize how dire it was a few years ago. So you may have heard me gasp a moment ago. Because I can't imagine Lake County without a Resource Conservation District. And the sea change that has happened since working with JADE Conservation Collective gives me such hope. It is amazing to work with your staff and consultants. And I wish you all the best. And I look forward to continuing as we work on climate-related issues. So thank you for this presentation.
Many aspects of the grant for the Climate Adaptation Planning involves environmental justice, diversity, equity, and inclusion. And the consultants are very good about that. There's another thing that the JADE Collective is good about is they do not see their role as permanent. They want to get staff on board so that they can disappear and go on somewhere else. So both of those items are encouraging. The diversity aspect and then the temporariness of their assistance.
Do we have anyone else in the chambers? Do we have anyone in the Zoom room? I'm not seeing anyone. Okay. Well, any final thoughts from the board? Thank you so much, Dr. Lyons. And I'm sure we're going to be talking a lot more over the next week. I think the next grant is due Wednesday. So we've got a lot more work to do.
Thanks for your support.
Thank you. Okay, our 6.5 item, 9:30 a.m. Presentation of Partnership Health Plan Expansion and Lake County Partnership Health Ordinance Update. This is from Health Services. And we have our partnership group here. And Dr. Duhon, do you want to come on up here? Are you coming up, Kim? All four of you, we have four chairs.
Your AV people do remarkable camera work. We have a lot to learn from them at our Zoom meetings.
Award-winning.
Oh, that's right.
Well, good morning. I think we should start with introductions. So yes, you do have some of the partnership crew here. I'm Lynn.
You want to pull the microphone a little closer?
Sorry. I'm Lynn Skurry. I'm Regional Director with Partnership Health Plan. Been with the plan many years, a long background in public health. And have focused really on four of the 14 counties in partnership, which includes Lake, Mendocino, Sonoma, and Marin Counties. So spent at least a decade working with Lake County and have lots of great relationships. And am really pleased with the opportunity to meet with you all. And I'll turn it over to Dr. Duhon.
Well, I'm Dr. Duhon, your Public Health Officer.
Kim Tangerman, Deputy Director, Public Health and Vice Chair for the, a current Vice Chair for the Board of Partnership Health Plan.
I'm Marshall Kubota. I'm a family physician. I'm Regional Medical Director with Partnership Health Plan, the same region that Ms. Skurry described, the Southwest Region. Been in the area since 1979 when I trained as a family physician at the then Community Hospital in Sonoma County. And have worked not only in Sonoma County, but have worked in Lake County as well, both with Adventist and Mendocino Community Health Centers at their Lakeview Health Center for, I guess I worked for over a decade there. So thank you for having us here today.
So we would like to make this, you know, informal if possible. So I want you to be sure and ask questions if, along the way. Some of you are very familiar with Partnership Health Plan and some of you might not be. So you know, don't hesitate to ask. So today, we're going to provide just a brief update on Partnership Health Plan. It's been several years, I think, since we met with the board. The pandemic seemed to have delayed just about everything. And we're also going to talk about the appointment of Dr. Duhon as one of our commissioners and review the revised county ordinance between Partnership Health Plan and Lake County. That's being revised to accommodate the expansion of 10 additional counties. And as I said, you know, don't hesitate to ask questions along the way. You know, healthcare is complicated, complex. We know that. So just briefly, a little bit about partnership. We are currently in 14 counties, expanding to 24 as of January. And if you look at the little map there, the blue counties are currently where we're operating and the green are the expansion counties. So that will bring us to really covering the Northern California and 24 counties. And we really, I guess, specialize somewhat in rural healthcare. There was a question about, does managed care really fit in a rural setting? And we feel it does really well and have a lot of expertise in working with rural communities. So we're very excited about the expansion. Important to note, we are a not-for-profit public plan. And with that, we try to make sure that we have a very low administrative rate, less than 5%. And that's important because that allows us to put more of the dollars to providing services and also reimbursing our healthcare providers at a rate that's significantly better than Medi-Cal. And the importance of that is really for access. Local control and autonomy, we're going to talk a little bit about that. But the Board of Partnership, Board of Commissioners, is made up of representatives from all of those counties. And with the expansion, we're having to do a little revision to our representation. We'll talk more about that. And community involvement, you know, when people think of a health plan, they, I think they kind of think of Blue Cross. And we are completely different. I consider us a public health, health plan, not-for-profit. And we are really here to work directly with the communities that we serve. And I know Bruno and I have been in many meetings together and MOOC and others. And we've worked with Kim Tangerman and actually Dr. Duhon in several of her roles. So we really appreciate. And that's the most exciting part of my job, is working really with the communities. So with that, we'll just kind of keep moving on. There's a little bit about the timeline. I'm not going to go into a lot of detail here, but started in 1988 with a single county and expanded along the way, adding counties as they became interested. And we only expand when the counties want to join partnership. And in 2013, Lake was part of our expansion. I was very active in that. And you know, I think it's been very successful. And again, I think, what I believe will be our final expansion in January of 2024, we'll adding those additional 10 counties. And many of those have been waiting for years to move into partnership because of some of the things that we mentioned. One last slide, I'm going to turn it over to Dr. Kubota. Our mission is to be, to help our members in the community serve, be healthy. And we're going to talk a little bit about some of our metrics. I personally love data, so wouldn't be a presentation without a little data. And we really want to be the highest-regarded plan in California. We currently have about 680,000 members in those 14 counties. And that will grow to about 840,000. About 31% of the residents in those counties are represented by Partnership Health Plan. So about 1 in 3 people that you meet are part of our health plan. In Lake County, that's about 50%. So we're really a significant part of the healthcare system. Any questions? All good? Great. I'm going to turn it over to Dr. Kubota to talk a little bit about some of the health plan's priorities.
Yes, so come just a little over a month from now, Partnership is going to take on the state Medi-Cal contract for an additional 10 counties. Again, we were invited in. They wanted us, actually, many of them wanted to have us back in 2014. But at that time, we didn't feel we were capable of doing so. And we did have our expansion. Subsequent to that, these additional 10 counties have continued to ask. And the opportunity did come up for them to join a partnership. And we turned on the, turned the switch on and been doing much to prepare for this. That switch turns on on January 1st. It's always good to have such a big change on a holiday. That's just the way the calendar works. But come January 1st, we'll be adding these 10 counties, hundreds of health centers, hundreds of thousands of new members, hospitals, clinics, DME providers, and other healthcare providers will join the partnership family. We are adding regional offices as well. We do have our main office in Fairfield. Lynn and I are in the Santa Rosa office. We have one in Eureka. And Shasta will be adding, in Reading, will be adding two more regional offices to take care of this 10-county expansion. So a high priority area for us. Medi-Cal redetermination, as you know, people were added to the Medi-Cal roles throughout the pandemic years. And nobody was taken off the roles during that time because of the difficulties with the COVID pandemic. And so the... difficulties with the COVID pandemic. And so the roles enrollment grew throughout those years. Now, with the end of the public health emergency, Medi-Cal and the state has begun redetermination, and that every, as the role of the month of the original enrollment comes up, they have to undergo redetermination now to see if they still are eligible for Medi-Cal. And that goes many different ways. Most are, but some have left the area. Many individuals lost their jobs early in the pandemic years and will put on the Medi-Cal and Partnership roles during that time, but have subsequently gotten their jobs back or new jobs and health insurance that way, and so are also not eligible for Medi-Cal. So individuals who moved out of the area, individuals who re-acquired their healthcare insurance, and unfortunately, some of whom, of course, have passed away, all have to be taken off our roles because we should not be responsible, the state should not be responsible for them at this point in time. And however, it is also important that those individuals who for two or three years have not undergone the paperwork of redetermination do so, so they maintain their eligibility. We, the county health departments and their eligibility offices, Partnership and all the various clinics have been very active in getting the individuals to fill out the proper paperwork to maintain their Medi-Cal benefits. They're are very easy on extending, so long as we can get in contact with them and they begin the process, that we're very patient, the state is very patient in keeping people on the rolls. CalAim was a large expansion of the Medi-Cal benefit that went beyond what would strictly be considered medical care. It went, began to go upstream because we know upstream care of the populace adds up to savings in the medical side. Medical side is one of the higher expenses. So the more upstream you can go to take care of the populace, the better you do in saving money downstream in the healthcare side. So that includes a couple of major areas. One is the, the complex care management. These are the individuals who are the most costly for healthcare, and paying closer attention to them to avoid healthcare costs, hospitalizations, rehospitalizations, things along those lines. And the second are what we call the, the community supports. And these are very wide-ranging supports that are sort of non-medical in nature. They include things like rent, not rent support, but support for rental, and that has its navigation, finding places, difficult, sometimes paying the initial deposits. We don't pay rent, but we will help with the initial deposits. Housing tenancy. Oftentimes, these individuals have not been homeless. They don't know what it means to pay rent, pay utilities, and they can lose housing very quickly if they don't understand that we help out with that type of navigation. And many other areas, like this medical foods for people with diabetes, chronic kidney disease, hypertension, and the like. And then soon, we'll be working with the justice system, and that has to do with that transition from incarceration to back to the community and make sure that there's a continuum, that we pick up the healthcare, that individuals lose Medi-Cal when they're incarcerated, and that we have a smooth transition because that first month out of incarceration is a very tricky month, and individuals oftentimes, you know, fall into ill health as a result. The juvenile justice system, individuals, children as well, and foster care and the like, will all become part of this community supports. So CalAim is a very broad area of work and a major initiative for Partnership at this point in time. Working with all of the counties, the nonprofits as well, within all these counties, the public health departments or the health, the health departments to utilize this benefit to its maximum capability because we know it is better for our communities. Workforce development, you know, if anything is the weak point in rural healthcare, it is workforce. All the way, the entire workforce in a community, whether it's in a hospital, a nonprofit organization, or the clinics, all the way from the front desk to their clinicians, all are very difficult in, and magnified in rural communities. We know our rural healthcare communities work tremendously hard. They work short-staffed, and that this is one of the weakest points in rural healthcare, is, is access and is workforce. So we'll talk a little bit about our recruitment, recruitment that we do. Transportation is a Medi-Cal benefit, and when you have counties with a big hole in the middle, like Lake County, transportation is really important. But, you know, this includes transportation, you know, we cover up to Modoc, Siskiyou, and Del Norte Counties, all the way down to the Highway 80 border soon. And when somebody needs transportation, say from Maltares to UC San Francisco, Partnership provides that, Partnership provides, oh, in 2020, over 800,000 trips, and that number is growing. And so it's an important linkage with our members, our patients, to acquire health, the proper healthcare. And that's not just the long journeys. This journey is within the town. It can be journeys to dentists, to substance use disorder treatment, pharmacies, as well as their hospital, as well as their clinics and the like, and Partnership can provide transportation for those without the means themselves. And then in the future, in 2026, is we become a Medi-Cal Medicare program as well. We don't do Medicare right now, but for those individuals who are eligible for both, Partnership will have to develop, and this is a state mandate for all organizations like ours, will have to develop a Medicare product as well for those who have Medi-Cal. As you might imagine, it's basically a new health insurance program, and so we'll be, we'll be very busy with that as well. The next slide. If we look at our provider network, let's, next slide up, please. Thank you. There we go. So we contract with all willing and able Medi-Cal providers with the state. And so, you know, so we have a very broad network of both private and public Medi-Cal providers in any county. We really work to maintain and develop this provider network. We have local representatives for every county. Lake County has, has its own representative to help stay in contact with all our, all our contractees to provide, you know, face-to-face help. They make regular calls. And of course, we're there and here on a regular basis to make sure that things run as smoothly as possible. We have a call center, and we know how frustrated, we all know how frustrating it is to get on the phone. Partnership prides itself in that over 99% of calls to claims and billing, and to a very high as well for our members with the, with the member services, that phones are answered live voice extraordinarily fast. Most of the time with, within a minute. People are not put on hold. We know that those are missed opportunities. And then we also provide kind of scorecards, this is from the business side, for our different networks and clinics, about how quick the turnaround, any problems with billing, because we know those cycles should be as short as possible, and how important that is for their finances. Many of our smaller rural clinics are really paycheck to paycheck. Next slide. As we mentioned, workforce development is extraordinarily important to us. And to, and Partnership provides a recruitment program that, that provides cash bonuses to, to clinicians who move from outside the partnership network, and we don't play musical chairs, that's of no real benefit to the area, into Partnership. That, that can include travel, it can include moving, and it includes actual cash, cash enhancement of whatever salaries they are, they are provided with the, by the health centers. And you can see that the initial pilot was 750,000, and now it's, has increased multiple times. It increased this last year to a larger bonus payments. And it includes not only coming, but includes staying as well, that those bonuses are spread out over years, and they actually increase over the years, that individuals stay up to five years, and that Partnership has, has invested $9.3 million to date. And so you can see that it has provided a number of successful offers to date to attract healthcare professionals to the area. So again, high priority. We know it's one of the difficult and weak points in, in the healthcare area.
So I will present one slide, and to share with the supervisors, the many reasons that I was very motivated and excited to join you and to serve as the health officer. One of them was to, to be able to work with Partnership Health Plan. The health plans across California make a huge difference in public health, and Partnership Health Plan, in my opinion, is an outstanding health plan. So I'm really, we're very, very fortunate to have Partnership Health Plan in our county. So about the demographics, we have about 35,000 members in Partnership Health Plan in Lake County, so these would be people with Medi-Cal coverage. And approximately 50% of the county population are covered by Partnership Health Plan. And it's, Partnership Health Plan is responsible for providing most medical services to these members, with a few exceptions, for dental, specialty mental health, and substance use disorder services. So those are carved out. But most other medical services are provided by Partnership Health Plan through the funding. And Adventist Health is the largest provider in Lake County, and followed by Lake County Tribal Health. So as mentioned, this will be coming up later, but the prior Health Services Director, Jonathan Portne, was one of the commissioners, and today will be brought forward to have me fill that role.
So any questions? Supervisor Spatia?
Thank you for the presentation, and good to see you all again. The, actually, since you're going on the slides, if you can go back to the workforce development, I think you said 9.3 million invested to date. I'm just wondering what the flexibility of that is. For example, I've been working with our fire districts and our hospitals, and hopefully, starting in January, I think it's still planned for that, we're going to start EMT course with the high schoolers, so that by the time they graduate, most of them will be 18, or you can take the test when you're 17 and get certified at the age of 18. Love to see more of those types of programs, to Grow Your Own, rather than to continuously bring in from the outside. Is there a way of investing those dollars locally for educational programs to bring in, like, for example, we don't have a nursing program here in Lake County, difficult to get there, that's a lottery system, it's already difficult when you have access to one, let alone when you don't have access to one. Is there those types of possibilities and those dollars that are available for you for investment?
Well, the program is fairly, well, it's fairly straightforward right now, and it covers physicians, nurse practitioners, physician assistants, and behavioral health providers. We have, on occasion, done special programs for training of community health workers and others. So, you know, we've expanded the program significantly this year to address the needs. So right now, that's not a focus, but we are very interested in supporting Grow Your Own, and looking at ways that we can, you know, obviously, work further upstream as encouraging students to go into those programs. So, for example, for a physician, we just recently added OBs as a part of qualifying for this. It's 100,000 signing bonus paid over five years. And that's where the retention piece comes into it, is sometimes you can, you can, you can recruit a physician, but they won't stay, or a provider won't stay. And we're really trying, as a collective community, to try and help them develop roots in their, the community and stay. So I think those are really good ideas. We talk a lot about how we can support those areas. So happy to discuss further. I think your EMT program is great. We want youth to be, you know, really focused and taking advantage of some of the amazing careers there are in healthcare.
It's definitely an open door for other avenues.
There's two additional provider types, really were part of the presentation, but community health workers that you might have heard about are now a provider that can be, their services can be billed to Partnership and reimbursed. This is huge. And another really important providers, doulas, that can support women prior to birth and after birth for 12 months. So amazing benefits. We're just starting to get those folks kind of trained and figuring out how to bill, because, you know, Medi-Cal billing is, well, health billing is not simple. But anyways, so lots of exciting things happening as we really look at broadening the way we provide health services, so.
Thank you. Supervisor Green, did you have a question?
Yes, there's some more slides, right? So I just want to make sure. Okay. So just to share, thank you, Partnership. Was a happy customer during my times when I was not gainfully employed as much as I am today. I was happily double insured for the first time in my life because the state did keep people enrolled, and now I am thankfully disenrolled. But, and I've always had excellent service, no matter what. But I have struggled from time to time, and I think some people do, with just the very basic understanding and the difference between a health plan, be it Partnership or Anthem Blue Cross, and providers, and sorting around various providers and going in and out of network, and not really knowing every single time whether I'm supposed to be picking up the phone to call Partnership, whether I'm supposed to be dealing directly with a provider, such as Adventist Health or Sutter Health, and all this network stuff. So I don't want to, like, belabor that because it's not part of your presentation here today, but can somebody give me that 30-second elevator speech, if only for the benefit of the public? I'm glad you're expanding, and it's a great big health plan, but can you distinguish between the health plan that Partnership is and the providers that operate under that health plan? 30 seconds or less?
30 seconds or less. So we are the insurance plan, and we have the, the list of benefits. We provide the benefits, some of which are required by the state, others of which we have enhanced because we see the upside of providing those particular benefits. So we don't directly provide any care. We have no care offices. But we work with the members, we work with the providers, and to make that access as quick and simple as, as possible. One of the things about Partnership is that all Medi-Cal members are initially, and most all, are assigned to a health center, so that they already have a clinician or health center that is interested in their care, and they should take advantage of that. They have somebody who is supposed to take, look after their healthcare. And we do that assignment. You can change your assignment if you want to, because you may or may not, may not be convenient, or they don't work with you as well as you would like. But you're assigned to a health center, they are paid by Partnership to take care of you. So we provide the assignment and the payment. The health centers provide the care.
And I think regarding navigation, we're all, we're health professionals. You know, this is how I spent my whole career. It's very complicated. And that's where member services can come in. And they're trained to help people answer questions and help navigate the system. Our system is fairly straightforward, but not always. But when you have multiple sources of coverage, like those Medicare, Medi-Cal folks, that's really complicated. And everybody needs, I think, help navigating, or if you have commercial insurance. So yes, calling member services, asking for help, they will help navigate. So yes, calling member services, asking for help, they will help navigate.
We, we provide all our materials in key languages and are available in multiple languages on request. We have translation services that are available, live translation services are also available through Partnership and made available to all of our contracted clinics as well. Live video translation and of course that includes ASL and we have large font, we have Braille, we have all, we, we try to communicate as, as well as we can with all our members.
So we have some great quality highlights that we'd like to share, of course, data. So we're going to move Matt on because we're, I know we're a little bit short on time.
Yeah. So we have a, what we call our primary, primary care quality program. It's made up of a number of measures. Many of them are straight out clinical in nature and we bonus, we pay for performance to our clinics. It was well over 24.
32.
32 million to our primary care clinics this last year alone and it depends on how well they do in key areas, both clinically and some administrative areas as well. But we emphasize the clinical areas with a number of different measures. As you can see here, that we compare them to nationwide Medicaid benchmarks. So we're doing the apples to apples to, to an extent. And Lake County has scored very well. In fact, Lake County continues to rise in their scores. So there's a definite carrot involved in this process because it is hundreds of thousands of dollars here in Lake County for achieving certain goals. And you can see that based on national percentiles that it, that, that Lake County has done well in blood pressure control, diabetes, colorectal cancer screening, treatment of asthma and in child visits under 15 months of age. And these scores have continued to rise throughout the time that Partnership, there are little variations, of course, with that and COVID certainly put a dent in some of that, but by and large continuing to improve in their scores on a year over year basis. And these, the elements of these quality measures are set both by committee that has input from the clinics themselves and pass all the way up through the board of, direct board of commissioners. That's why these positions are important. So it's a, it's a big carrot and it works.
Now on to the really probably least exciting part of the presentation is the ordinance. And, you know, I think we've talked about it before. It's fairly straightforward with the adding of the, well, actually, we revised the ordinance when Lake County joined with eight other, seven other counties in 2013 because our board is just getting too big. It's about 30 now and with the additional 10 counties, we'd be a 40, 45 member board, which is just really not feasible. So we are having to, the, we had a committee of the board that met, I don't know, Kim, if you were part of that, that really came up with a revised representation structure. And so some of our counties will be losing a, a board seat and Lake is included in that. You can see the new formula up there. We also expanded our consumer seats from two to three. So it says eventually it's a 24 member board. I apologize. It's a 38 member board. That will be when all of the, when all the terms are, are sort of worked out, we will have a 38 member board and positions are actually reduced when they, when their term is up. So no one will be asked, asked to leave until their term is up. So at a point of reappointment. The next slide just shows the allocation of board seats by, by county and by membership. So it's based on the number of members. And so our current counties will be reduced to having 24 seats. And then as we expand into the next counties, that provides an additional 14. So that's up to 38. The other big change has been that the term of appointment has been increased from two years to four years. It takes, well, Kim can tell you, it takes at least a year to really figure out how the plan works. And so by the second year, you're just hitting your stride. Most people stay on the board for many years. So the four, four-year term will be, I think, very helpful.
The appointment of Dr. Duhon is important because?
Important because we want, we really like to have a broad representation. She's taking Jonathan Portne's position and if she is, if she's appointed before the end of the year, that will allow her to extend that, or accept that term and extend into the next year. So there'll be, while it says eventually there'll be one position for Lake County, there'll be two for the next year. And Kimberly Tangerman is our vice chair, very important position in Partnership, really recognize the, her commitment to taking on that responsibility next year as chairing our board. So very proud of Tim, Kim, I've worked with, we've worked together for many years when she was at Lakeview and so happy that she's with Public Health right now.
I just want to be sure that was, Kim is becoming the chair of the board.
She will, she's the vice chair now. She will become the chair next year. Yes, thank you. So that pretty much wraps up our presentation. Any questions about the ordinance or about the health plan or about our presence in Lake County? Be happy to talk about that. Supervisor Spatier?
Just two quick questions. For Kim's term, when is that over?
So I'm vice chair now. I'll become chair next year. And then there is a, a year that I'll be, as the chair moves out, they retain that position as the supporter, the kind of the historical, yeah, that's past chair. And so it'll be for sure two whole more years.
Okay. Just to find out the, the term that's left over still, because at one point we will be going down to one. And so that's why I wanted to kind of check and see when that, that would occur. And then just a quick question for Partnership. Sorry, we've met so many times, but on specific topics, do you, do you guys have the ability to advocate for change at the state level or is there any prohibition since you're kind of a arm of the state in a sense that you're working to manage the Medi-Cal program?
Yes, yes, we do. We do advocate when it's appropriate.
Okay. So there, I had many issues brought to me about the payer mix and the inability to get reimbursed appropriately and making services less and less reliable because of that payer mix. So I think I'll, I'll be reaching out to see if there's something that we can work on. Thank you.
Supervisor Crandall?
Oh, yeah. So I just wanted to ask, I was looking at the makeup of the seats and whatnot. The ordinance determines basically how many board seats will be available or is, I understand also that it's the, the actual, you know, participants that are on the program that you're using as a basis to apply seats. It gives a lot of preferential treatment to the more populated counties, I feel, and that's kind of something we always deal with in rural, rural, rural county America or state of California. So I don't know if there's, you know, like, is there a reasoning for that or is there any discussion about that in your boards or anything like that, board meetings?
Well, you know, this is the Senate versus the House, right? Kind of a question. So yes, the, it is based upon a membership. That certainly seems to be a somewhat equitable way of looking at it. On the other hand, over half of our counties will be rural. So if you were to do the math, rural versus more urban counties, the total numbers on the board of rural representation versus more urban or suburban representation come out pretty even.
Thank you. I was setting a volleyball up for this question.
Thank you.
I'm going to open it up to the public, see if there's anyone in the Zoom room or in chambers who like to give public input. I'm not seeing any. So thank you so much for the presentation today.
Yeah, thank you very much. Appreciate the opportunity.
Thank you all for working so closely with us. It really has been a lot of, a lot of, very rewarding to, to work with all the, with the board as well as the many organizations and clinics and providers within Lake County. It's really, really rewarding for us.
Thank you and thank you for joining us today.
Yep. Great, thank you.
Dr. Duhon, do you want to stay and give your presentation?
Take a quick break?
We can take a quick break. Yeah, let's do that and we'll come back at 10:30. Okay. Welcome back. We are going to move on to our 6.6, 9:45 a.m. presentation of Public Health Officer, Dr. Noemi Duhon, Work Plan for September 1st, 2023 through September 1st, 2024. Dr. Duhon?
Hello. Thank you for having you, for having me here today. So the way I put forward this work plan is actually a document with several pages. It isn't a PowerPoint presentation, but this is one of the pages that I presented to you for my work plan and wanted to start out by saying that California law gives the public health officer at least 171 distinct duties and grants broad authority to the health officer to take action to prevent disease. So when asked to create a health, a work plan for the year, it, it needs to be high level because of these 171 duties, it would be hard for me to present those to you briefly. But this is a document from the CDC that I included in your packet that outlines 10 essential functions of the public health services and the public health officers by virtue of their role. And you can see from this document that at the center is equity. So at the center of what the health officer must focus on is equity. And in, and we're very fortunate in the state of California that our California Department of Public Health puts equity at the center of everything that is done at the level of the state and that that carries down to us at the level of the county. So equity being at the center, you can see that if, if you look at the handout, that these areas of focus include population health, assessing the population's health overall, not just the individual people, but the population, investigating public health hazards, communicating to the community, strengthening the community, being a champion of policy change to create healthier communities, utilizing legal actions to protect the public health, existing legal actions, supporting equitable access to public health programs, building the public health workforce, improving public health functions and building public health infrastructure. So in the work plan, I touch on all of these areas. And so if you go to, I created a grid and if you go up one, this was how I attempted in your handout of materials to organize the work that I'm going to be doing in the next year according to this rainbow of, of services. And I, I grouped them in numbers at the top. So it's a little bit complicated, but I tried to make a format that you would be able to unpack, if you will, all of the duties that I will be carrying out. So along the top, it references that rainbow of 10 services and to the, the left here on the, the Y axis, what I'm focusing on the Y axis here is that the duties of the health officer are not only in Lake County. So in my duties, there is our health services department and within our health services department, we have the public health division. And that's where I start with the work that I'm doing. But then as well, we have regional work. So as the health officer, I'm part of a region called Rancho, which is the Rural Association of Northern California Health Officers. So there's regional work as well in public health. Also within the county of Lake, there's interdepartmental work and I call out some of that work here. So for example, we heard about this tremendous story of the, of the heroism of using Narcan at the school to save a life. That then became a response that involved many of the departments that we have at the county to gather around and see how we can do more of this work. So, so there's the, the, there's the intra-departmental, there's the interdepartmental, there's the regional, and then there's the state level. So as a health officer, I am an advocate for Lake County at the level of the state, attending meetings and representing us. So in this work plan, I, I really made an effort to make myself accountable to you by being specific about things that I will accomplish, both very locally intra-departmentally, all the way to the state and across these 10 service areas that are the work of the health officer. I think that it might be helpful to make time in this section to answer questions that you might have about the type of work that I would be doing because it's, there's a lot. It includes being immediately available. Last time, last night I had a conversation with one of the fire chiefs, for example, to just have an immediate conversation about the health of our, our county. Other times it's more a thoughtful, long-term process. For example, working together with Partnership Health Plan to advocate for improvements in our county. We just got a large grant called PATH Sighted from the state of California that's through that CalAim funding that we were just talking about. It's about a $1.2 million grant. So that is an example of something that over a year's time, I'll be working within our department and also with the health plan and in our region to roll out this new resource of $1.2 million going to the PATH Sighted funding to improve the county's health. So I just wondered if maybe the best way to do this presentation is to answer questions or if you would like me to focus on any particular area. What I did with the, the work plan is I highlighted in yellow, if you wanted to follow, you know, some items through and ask me, you know, how might I, within intra-departmentally working, what am I doing on substance use disorder is like highlighted in yellow, if you wanted to ask more questions about that, but really just wanting to be available to ask questions or take your direction in terms of how you'd like me to present this in more detail.
Supervisor Spatier?
So there was a couple of things that kind of sparked some thoughts when I was reading through this earlier. One of them, I appreciate that SUDS is highlighted on there. I think that is an absolutely important issue that we have to deal with in our community. We are on the map, whether we're looking at a state map or even on a national map. We have to figure out how to reduce those numbers and, and protect our, our people that are unfortunately just dying at a very high rate because of that. So I appreciate that. I appreciate seeing homelessness. It's hard to always figure out which department is supposed to handle homelessness and, and it's all of us.
Right.
So I appreciate that being their very vulnerable population, obviously very unhealthy living situations. I don't see, and I don't see it on there, but I, I, I'm certain that you are applying your methods based on that, but that's like the Community Health Needs Assessment.
Yeah.
The CHIP, the Community Health Improvement Plan. I know that my being a member appointed by the Board of Supervisors to Hope Rising, I'm very involved in those things and just kind of wondering if that would be a, a place for you to, to be is at Hope Rising, involved in those conversations where we have all of our hospitals, all of our healthcare facilities there, our nonprofits and so on and so forth. Just because it's, these topics are so broad, I, I didn't see Hope Rising in there. I didn't see CHNA or things like that. Just want to make sure that you're involved in the groups that already have that collaborative status so that you're not creating anything new, you're not trying to find it. I just wanted to make sure that you were aware of it. I know I've seen public health staff at Hope Rising. There's been a little reworking of Hope Rising since Adventist Health has taken over. Just something that I was thinking about. And then there was a number, I didn't really want to highlight that number in the previous conversation, but you speak of equity and equity for people, absolutely. Equity across our county to make sure people have access, people are taken care of, nobody is, is lacking that ability to find good health in their lives. But we have an issue of a lack of equity between institutions or facilities. And when you look at the number of Partnership members for each major health And when you look at the number of partnership members for each major healthcare facility, there's an issue. And that to me is something I know that is being worked on, and I'm doing my best not to name names, that is being worked on to rebuild equity in how we're serving our communities and how each facility is serving the community they serve. But I think that public health has a role in that to ensure that our facilities do not close the doors, again, like we have in the past, where partnership plan are no longer accepted as new patients. And I just want to make sure that that's something to be highlighted for, in case that's not something that you had intended when thinking of the idea of equity because our facilities have created also some inequities within our communities.
Yeah, great comments and questions. In terms of the CHINA, that CHNA and the CHIP and Hope Rising, my first period of the, of the plan, the first three months, is really getting to know people, building relationships, meeting folks, and getting invited to committees. So, I would love to be invited to be part of whatever committees are involved with Hope Rising or developing the CHNA. And that absolutely is an appropriate place for the health officer. And it comes out under accreditation. Also, when we're working on accreditation, having involvement in those Community Health Needs Assessment is important for our accreditation in public health. I mentioned that we, we have received this one point, about $1.2 million Path Sighted funding. That is going to be very much pulling us in the Public Health Department into even more partnership with, for example, Hope Rising. Because in that grant, there was $450,000 written in for community health workers. And we, as a Public Health Division, are not going to want to start, you know, having a whole community health worker department solo in a silo. We want to do that in partnership and supporting the other organizations that are already using community health workers. So, I think as we roll that grant out, and we're just, we just received it, we haven't gotten it yet. We just got news that we received it. We have not received the funds. That's going to be a great opportunity for me to get more involved in, for example, with Hope Rising as a specific example, and with the CHINA and the CHIP, the Community Health Needs Assessment. Regarding equity, equity and Partnership Health Plan, I'm really, you know, very happy that I will be able to serve on the Partnership Health Plan Board. Because absolutely, when, at that level with Partnership Health Plan, there are opportunities for advocacy, including at the level of the state, and it is, and also locally. So, I think as the health officer being able to be on the Board of Partnership Health Plan will allow me to do more of that work specifically that you're talking about. But anytime that there is a meeting that you think that it would benefit me to be at, please let me know because I will, I'm waiting, partly what I'm doing is I'm waiting for invitations. And anything with Hope Rising for sure is something.
And if I may continue, I, I don't know what the Board's perspective or view on that is because we can send you invitations to multiple things, whether that comes to the Board for approval of those requests, or if we could do that on a personal level in those requests, or go through our CAO to see if those are appropriate requests. Just because public health meets so many different.
Yeah.
Like, you have housing on here, right? Like, I, do I want to invite you to a housing meeting? Obviously, I need to triage and figure out what's the best. But at the same time, you are our public health officer that we direct, not me. And so, I'm just trying to figure out what the best way would be. And that's why I wanted to bring up Hope Rising today, rather than send you invitations in the past, was to take advantage of the fact that we have a Board that can say, yes, this is appropriate or not appropriate type of thing.
Yeah.
So, I, I don't know what the Board's thoughts are on sending invitations because I just wanted to check in.
I, I don't know if we, I mean, I personally feel like we don't need to get Board direction for an invitation. If we told you to be somewhere, that's different. So, I'm okay with invitations and not having to wait to come before the Board. That's my thought.
Yeah, I'm in, I'm in agreement with that also. I tell you, going to build those partnerships and continue moving forward. So, Bruno brings up some great work that's being done by other agencies in the county. We have our advisory councils also, our appointed councils in each one of our communities. I think all of those are things that you need to be reaching out to. So, yeah, I'm fine with individual invitations coming from Hope Rising. And Blue Zones also is doing some great work. I think you need to be at the table, having those conversations, building those partnerships with the grants coming. Yeah, I agree. Individual invitations should work fine.
Yeah. Yeah, I would really appreciate that because as I'm getting to know folks, you know, I've heard there's Blue Zones happening in Lake, but I have not known when the meetings are. So, I would, I think it would be very helpful. If you see a meeting you think it would be good for me to be at, just send me the invitation. And, you know, certainly working through our CAO and if you want to. But I am an open door to you. So, and I really would appreciate having those invitations to meetings you think that I should be at. And to, also, I do get invited to meetings. Like tomorrow, we're having the Clear Lake Hitch Second Governmental Summit. And I really appreciate that I am invited, you know, automatically, so to speak, in my role to some meetings. But I, I think there could be more. So.
Supervisor Green?
Yeah, I appreciate the willingness of my colleagues to throw as much flexibility as possible. But it sounds like we're teetering toward a policy. And I think that standing openness may not be applied universally to all of our other department heads. So, I just want to signal that. I like the openness here, you know, and I want the flexibility to have similar ability with other department heads. Speaking of committees, Emergency Medical Care Committee, which is my committee de jour and a challenge, I don't see it specified in your work plan, and I don't think that's an intentional oversight.
No, it is.
But my one question about your whole work program might be, given what you've already identified as core areas of concern that you want to tackle, plus whatever invites you get from us and the general public about additional things you want to tackle, have you given some thought or some initial time study thoughts to, you know, what balance of your time is going to be diverted, devoted to each of the, there's a lot already on this work plan. And so, have you thought about the percentage of the time that you're going to be parsing to each of these? Because I think, I appreciate the vision and the expanse of this, but I also wonder how a single person, you know, within the hours allotted and all that, is going to be accomplish that, plus be open door policy and available for invites and meetings and stuff like that. So, have you kind of sliced and diced what percentage of time might go to these various tasks?
Yes, and actually, the LEMSA is on there. It's, I don't know if I can point it out on the screen, but it is definitely in there, the work with the, I, I wrote it as relationship with the, strengthen the, the relationship with the LEMSA under Lake County Interagency and Items Number Three and Four. That's been very important work, working on that ordinance. You know, the health.
And I just want to, and I don't want to interrupt, but I am going to.
Yeah.
Yeah, that's been important work, but it's happened outside the Emergency Medical Care Committee. It's kind of happening on an ad hoc basis.
Oh, okay.
So, and North Coast EMS has been participating in that. That's our LEMSA. But I know you've come to one of our EMCC meetings.
Yeah.
I know we're not meeting regularly.
Yeah.
And we haven't hit Quorum in a long time. So, I just wanted to highlight the absence of EMCC, which is distinct from the LEMSA, and want to make sure that we get some appropriate support for that.
Okay, well, I, that was just my learning curve. That should have been as part of the LEMSA bullet. I would have said EMCC and strengthening. I meant that to be one body of work, and I'm learning the distinctions within that body of work of what is agency, what is committee. But my intention is to be fully present for that work and that committee. In terms of how the time is divided for a health officer, I mean, that's why I started out by saying we have 171 over 171 distinct duties. If, if I had to summarize what the health officer does, it's to be present for all of it and to be available for all of it. And how, and that's why, you know, I'm on call 24/7, 365 at this time because we don't have a deputy. So, it can become a huge amount of work when there's an event, you know, like a pandemic or a fire or an emergency. But otherwise, it's, it's something that you, you know, I'm just doing every day. You know, I'm, I'm thinking about Lake County every day. And what rises up in, there's certain of it, certain of the work that is long-term. Like we, like I said, we just got this large grant from the state, this 1.2 million Path Sighted funding in round two. That's going to be a long-term project. So, on that project, we're setting up meetings. We're working together in our division and our department to plan what that's going to look like. What are we going to use the funding on? Because again, that grant was written by Jonathan Portnoy. So, he wrote the grant, and now we're, we're material, you know, we're operationalizing it. So, some of the work is happening over a long period of time, and that, it takes time management, just knowing how to keep things going and work on them over time with the team. And other things are immediate responses where there's an urgency. Right now, we have an urgency around youth opioid overdoses. And how are we going to make sure that we get Narcan into the schools so that there's sufficient Narcan there so that if there is an event and they go to grab the Narcan, that it's there? And also, the issue came up that what if one dose doesn't work? What if you need five doses? Sometimes you need more than one dose, so we need to stock the schools with Narcan. That's more an emergency response that we're in, interdepartmentally working on right now. So, in terms of how to get it all done, that's the challenge of the health officer, you know, is to juggle all of these different balls and make sure we're prioritizing and then keeping things going and not overcommitting, which is part of the challenge as well. Because there's so many things that the health officer can get involved in. And I'm pulled out here the items that I'm focusing on as the top priorities moving forward.
Okay. Any other questions? I'll open it up for the public. Do we have anyone in the chambers or in the Zoom room? And I'm not seeing any hands up. So, we'll bring it back. Any final, Supervisor Crandall?
Thank you. Thank you very much for this update. I appreciate it.
Yeah, thank you. And I'm, I'm really excited about the next year. I know we've got a lot to look forward to. And I'm sure we'll be hearing updates from you often as we go along with these different priorities that you have as we start to make some ground.
Yes, absolutely.
Thank you. Thank you for coming in today.
Okay.
Thank you.
And you know what? Maybe we'll just get down to your appointment since we have a few minutes.
Yeah.
Okay, 7.5, Consideration of Nomination of Dr. Noemi Duhon as the second seat to the Partnership Health Plan Board. Do we have any comments from the Board?
Just to clarify, so this appointment is to fill the unexpired term of the former Health Director. And my understanding from the previous presentation is at the end of that term, which would be basically one year after your appointment, that seat will be no more. And then the Health Services Person will, will be the Chair of that. Is that right? So, this appointment is basically for one year, for the sunset of this second Board seat that's going away.
Correct. And then Kim Tangerman, who is the Vice Chair, will rise up to the Chair, and then she will have that one position representing Lake County.
Thank you.
Okay, any comments from the public? Not seeing anyone, so I'll bring it back to the Board for action.
Madam Chair, I move to nominate Dr. Noemi Duhon as the second seat to the Partnership Health Plan Board.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Hey, thank you so much.
And just for clarification, Madam Chair, it would be the approval of the nomination.
Approve the nomination.
I meant to approve the nomination.
I meant to second that.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay.
We almost messed that up for you.
Okay, 6.7, 10:30 a.m., Public Hearing, Consideration of Proposed Negative Declaration, IS 23-03, General Plan Amendment, GPAP 23-01, and Rezone, RZ 23-01, for Reynolds Systems, Inc., to change the general plan designation of a portion of the parcel from rural lands to industrial and rezone a portion of the parcel from rural lands to heavy industrial. Location 18649 California State Highway 175, Middletown, APN 01304604. We have Director Turner.
Thank you. We'd like to request this item be continued for one week. As I was uploading the items onto the Board's agenda, I inadvertently uploaded the resolution twice and not the ordinance. And so, in order to make sure that the public has sufficient time to review the actual document, we request a continuance on this to the next meeting.
It needs an ordinance?
Yeah, the, the, it has both a general plan amendment, text amendment, as well as a rezone. And so, one is done by resolution and one is done by ordinance.
So, what does it look like next week, Johanna?
I like 10.
10 o'clock next week?
Thank you.
Okay, do we have any public comment? Not seeing any? Okay.
Madam Chair, I move to continue this public hearing to December, is it 2nd?
Yeah.
5th, wow, completely off. December 5th at 10 a.m.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, we'll see you next week.
Thank you.
Thank you. We have three minutes until the next item. Oh, sure. If you think it'll be, yes, come on up. 7.3, Consideration of Update on Department Progress on Establishing Administrative Citations and Collections Processing for Code Enforcement Violations. And we have Director Turner.
Maria Turner, Director for Community Development Department. We are very excited to bring this update to you as it was the Board's direction that we develop a system for administrative citations and fine processing. This is a time-intensive sort of process that takes a certain level of expertise that our current staff resources do not have. And so, we were very happy to find Data Ticket, which is already working in Clear Lake to do the exact same job. And I have the Deputy Administrator, Shannon Walker Smith, here to give you the details.
Good morning. So, as you know, we have been working for quite some time to try to put a system in place to collect administrative penalties and fines. And as you know, code enforcement, you know, has a lot of programs that they're trying to work through in Lake County, illegal dumping, public nuisances, cannabis, illegal cannabis cultivation, hazardous vegetation. And we really have a couple of different tools we can utilize. Abatements, of course, is one of those tools, which then we can convert into liens for cost recovery. But administrative citations is one of the tools we haven't really been utilizing because of the lack of resources to process those citations and do the collections for those in-house. So, we have worked through all of the legalities of developing a contract with this third-party data collection service, Data Ticket. And the contract does not require Board approval because it's a, it's a small contract. It's a fee-for-service. And so, we pay as they collect on our, our fines that we send to them. They take their fees off the top. And so, it becomes, that is most of what gets paid. And, yeah, so they're doing basic collections. It's a fee-for-service. All of the hearings, there is more hearing processes that get, that are involved if a resident wants to appeal a citation. And all of those processes will stay in-house with the Board. The, the company does have the ability to adjudicate some of those hearings, but because of our ordinance and the way that it's currently written, all of those hearings will stay with the Board of Supervisors. And if collections are not made through their regular processes, then they also And if collections are not made through their regular processes, then they also have the ability to work with us and attach these fines through the franchise tax board, which is another way that we could ultimately potentially recover some of our costs for some of this work that we're doing out in the community. And, you know, we, trying to hit kind of two goals with this, both becoming a division of the county that is more financially stable on its own, but also we're trying to look to make lasting changes in the county where we would hold property owners responsible for keeping their properties to a certain standard and, and that there would be consequences if that was not the case through administrative citations. So we're excited, happy to answer any questions that the board may have.
Great, this is exciting.
Supervisor Crandall? I could also just add, we wanted to express our appreciation for County Council. They have been very helpful in making sure that this agreement reflects the board's wishes.
Excellent, thank you.
Oh, thank you. I really was excited to see this. I know that in the municipal advisory committee meetings, the, or the town halls, code enforcement will be present in explaining how this is going to be the inclusion that will help hold our ordinances to effect once this is in place. And so to see it coming forward is really exciting for me. And I know for all of us, because this gives us, like you said, a chance to have lasting changes. And there's ordinances that cover this, but we're just kind of sitting like, how are we really going to get it? You know, and I know that we'll get there. This is where, we're getting to that point where the rubber is starting to meet the road. And I appreciate the work you've put into it.
Supervisor Sabatier?
So I really appreciate this being here as a presentation. It's not quite past the finish line yet, but never been so far and it's been a long time coming, so really appreciate this. One of the things that I'm hoping I can maybe get a consensus from the board is, at one point in the near future, maybe around mid-year budget review or something like that, can we get a review of what the fines are, what that looks like, just to kind of re-review what exact, because all of a sudden, people are going to start seeing these fines. I think it would be good for us to review it. Is it too weak? Is it too strong? Is it just right? And at least making it very public about what those fines will look like. I'm hoping to see this in action within the next three to six months. I don't know if the tax intercept takes a little while to set all that up. I know it took a whole three to six months or something like that for the city of Clearlake. But the fact is, this is how you hold people responsible to change their behavior. Paying for something that they would have already paid for is almost just taking their responsibility and taking that role for them. This is actually putting teeth onto the ordinances that we have. So very thankful that this is here. Let's, let's push it across the finish line. And if that's possible to get consensus from the board.
Yes.
Okay, Supervisor Green?
Has this contract been executed yet?
Nope. I was waiting until you all received the update before I sign.
And that's what I thought as well. I didn't assume that this was past the finish line. I just know that we're getting there. You needed this. It will get there. And I do appreciate, I do, I would like to see, because you're, you're thinking that if the fines aren't working, we would do something to work that administrative?
Just a re-review where we're at with fines?
With our ordinance, right? Okay, okay, good.
Yeah, we'd be happy to return and do a review of what the fines are in the ordinance. And we have some work to do. We are planning to sign the agreement as long as there are no outstanding concerns by the board. And then we have some work to do to work through the processes with Data Ticket that will align with the ordinance. And all of those processes and forms and fines will get vetted through County Council as well. And then we'll be happy to bring that back for, for review and update as well.
Okay, thank you. Do we have any public comment? Okay.
Just one last question. I know you were kind of relying on the board's willingness and the current ordinance that provides that the board will act as the hearing body for any appeals. But you did mention that they offer adjudication services here. Don't need to go into it today, but I'd be interested in seeing what the prices were on that. Just, I have a sneaking suspicion. We may want to take a look at that somewhere down the road. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, well, thank you for the update.
Thank you.
We'll see you back after lunch. Well, that's true. Yes, okay. Do you want to come up? Tom? 6.8, 11 a.m., continued from November 7th, 2023, consideration of proposed findings of facts and decision in the appeal of Scotts Valley Energy Corporation, AB 2301. If you want to have a seat, Tom, and we can work through the conversation that was started earlier in the month.
Chair?
Yes.
I know I've continuously, yeah, so. Once this, it's not for all of them. This is just this project. And I'll just state again, when this, when this whole Scotts Valley Energy Corporation started, I was the signatory on one of the MOUs with Scotts Valley. So, but there hasn't been anything after that. So once this situation's done, I don't have to recuse myself so much. So just giving you that insight because I know probably it's been a while since I've explained it.
Thank you.
Thank you. Maria Turner, Community Development Department. The board, on its November 7th meeting, considered proposed findings of fact for an appeal of a tentative parcel map. During the deliberation, Mr. Jordan, representing Scotts Valley Energy Corporation, raised a question regarding the length of the required half-width road improvements that were a condition of the parcel map. His opinion that was put to the board, which was directed for staff to address, would be if the road improvements were to be for the entire length of the parcel as it abuts Red Hills Road, or if it was to be limited to the portion of the parcel that is currently zoned rural residential for the housing. I do have a, I did bring a parcel map that we can upload, sort of show the board what we're looking at. The parcel itself, Johanna, you're going to have to help me. Thank you. The parcel map itself will split the parcel into, I think, four new parcels with the resulting. Yes, please. The road improvements are not typically marked on the parcel map, so this is a visual aid just to help the board sort of picture what we're looking at. So while they're uploading that, staff did take this time after the item was continued to today's meeting to confer regarding the subdivision ordinance portion that describes the required road improvements. In your memo, you'll find that it describes that the, requires the road improvements by the subdivider or developer of any division or subdivision in land, of land in which any lot or parcel abuts an existing county-maintained road. There's no further verbiage within the subdivision ordinance that notes limitations to just housing-related zoning districts or any zoning districts. We treat the parcel, the project parcel in its entirety as we, as, as we develop the conditions for the parcel. So in this case, the code applied would apply to the entire area or the entire length of the parcel that does abut a county-maintained road. Staff was unable to support the, Mr. Jordan's request to differentiate and limit that half-road or half-width improvement to be limited only to the portions of the parcel that you'll see on the southern, southern part. You'll see that delineation. It's not quite halfway. It's a little up halfway. And that is, this, this separates the zoning districts. All of these are rural residential. This is highway commercial. And so Mr. Jordan's request was to limit the half-road improvements to this portion of Red Hills Road and exclude this portion in the highway commercial. Staff was unable to support that request with review of the subdivision ordinance. And I think that the Public Works Director is also joining in Zoom and available for questions. One more thing, there were also non-substantive changes or typographical errors, I think, and an exclusion of a previous portion of the findings of fact. Those are also included, both in your redline version and noted in the clean version as well. It is staff's recommendation that the findings of fact be adopted as presented today with no further amendment regarding the half-width road improvement.
Director Deleon, do you have anything to add?
Good morning. No, I, I don't have anything additional to add. Director Turner correctly and accurately described the ordinance to you that the entire frontage of the property being subdivided is subject to that, to that requirement. And we would concur with her recommendation that the improvements be applied to the entire length of the property. Thanks.
Okay, Mr. Jordan?
Thank you, Borden. First of all, I apologize for taking your time on this issue. But I think it's important to look, first of all, at the date of that subdivision map that you're looking at, which is October, I believe, March of 2021. That map was done, taking in consideration and looking back at the history of the property. The history originally was zoned agricultural. We have no documentation in our files to indicate when the division between the commercial highway zone and the rural residential zone was, was created. We do not believe it was our request to have it created. We believe it happened as part of the master general plan update that was, was conducted by your, your, your Community Development Department at that time and approved by your Board of Supervisors, presumably through the Planning Commission. If that indeed is the case, that the division of that property had occurred at that time and the subdivider at that time would have been the county, not the, not the, not the owner of the property, who again has, had no knowledge of this division. The first I came across in the knowledge of this division was when I moved for a major use permit to put on a bioenergy plant on the rural residential section. And I say the rural residential section or parcel because at that time, I was informed that we in fact had two zones, the commercial highway zone and the rural residential zone. So that the map that you have up there today is an attempt to just delineate and show the subdivision only applied to the rural residential area. The commercial highway area, which was always designated as 12 to 14 acres, was, was therefore delineated to, to, to make that distinction. The second argument that I suggest is that when we were talking, the whole intent of a subdivision is to, to identify any increase in traffic that would be created by the subdivision, not just an arbitrary and compresious division of, of land or, or a parcel. When you look at this, this argument, it was Director Deleon's argument that nine homes would have a significant impact upon the, upon the traffic pattern of Red Hills Road and therefore the request for the total exclusion of that requirement was denied on the basis of that increase. Nine homes, three-bedroom, assuming four trips a day, would be 36 trips a day on that prop, on, on the use of Red Hills Road, which I don't think is a major increase in the amount of traffic. We always spoke about this subdivision and treated this subdivision as if we were only looking at the rural residential section. We never included or considered that the commercial highway section was part of that subdivision. Again, the vision you see up there was an attempt to, to document for the first time an action that we believe the county took prior and independent of the, of, of the approval of, of the owner of the property. And finally, I think you need to look at the spirit of the law and the ordinance. The spirit really refers to a subdivision of property where there is an increase in the traffic pattern that would be created by that subdivision. And again, that subdivision would, is only the rural residential area that would, would increase that traffic pattern. And so for these reasons, I believe that the intent. If you look at your ordinance, it talks about a minor arterial road. The document referenced by Ms. Turner does not identify a minor arterial road. It identifies an arterial street, arterial road, and a minor road, but not a minor arterial road. So we're not sure that it totally applies to what we were speaking to today because again, we believe that it refers only to the subdivision section of the property that we were intending to, to subdivide and move forward with. And so for those arguments, I still believe that the subdivision action that we want to finalize and move forward with, which your board has said, requires an expansion of the width of Red Hills Road would only apply to that subdivision section.
Do you have anything to add? Okay, Supervisor Green?
So thank you for bringing the map. I think it highlights some questions at least. So I think, as stated in the staff report, 17-26.6, the literal reading of it would say the entire parcel, including the highway commercial portion, the road widening should apply to all of that. But if we're recording a parcel map that's being subdivided, as shown here, parcel four, three, blah, 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 so, so it, so it is a, a parcel split, isn't it?
It's a parcel map resulting in four parcels with a remainder.
So how many parcels do we have there on this map? Because the interpretation seems to be a single parcel and so the code should be applied on that basis. But the action being requested or that was taken was actually subdivided, so the fair-
The tentative parcel map is, is of that entire project parcel. I believe when Mr. Jordan spoke about subdividing, he actually meant to say rezoning. That is one entire parcel in front of you that is being divided into four parcels with a remainder.
I, I have a point of order. I feel like we are relitigating the appeal versus approving what was stated. What was stated is typing up what was stated in a video. We can watch it ourselves and make sure that that's what we stated. But I feel that now we're creating interpretation and potentially a change of what was stated versus approving the findings, which was a whole public hearing portion of discussing these types of things. I feel like, I, I just feel like this is not an appropriate discussion. It's an appropriate discussion because you need to know what you're in for. I, I agree 100% with why you're asking these questions. I just don't feel this is the appropriate venue for us to re-litigate, maybe litigate is not the right term, but to rediscuss the appeal hearing as to, because the appeal was, I don't want to have to build more on this road than I have to. We're back to having that same conversation over again. So I'd like to hear from our County Council.
Yeah, so the public hearing for this with testimony took place on September 19, 2023. That portion, that, that public hearing with testimony has been closed already. So what is before your board today is really the statement of the findings of fact and decision that's derived from that hearing. Points of clarification, typographical errors, I believe those have been addressed. As a matter of clarification, that is, that is for your board's consideration, but Supervisor Sabatier is correct that short of actually reopening the hearing and, and taking in more testimony about this, the, the appellant applicant has already provided the arguments at that, whatever testimony that was provided back in that September 19, 2023 hearing.
To the Chair, I can only add that my testimony at that time only assumed and implied, and understood that the sub, that the width of the road was relative to the subdivision section and that my discussion at that time and understanding at that time was, it was limited to that. I never had the discussion or understanding that it included the whole total parcel map. So I did not address that sex, that, that issue until I read the statement. That's before your, to take action today, to understand that you were thinking and the staff was thinking that it included the total length of the road. what we are obligated to pay for in going through, if we have the ability to go through with a subdivision of the parcel to begin with.
So, I mean, I think our findings have to rely on the code as it's written, and we can't.
But I think your findings have to rely on the code as they're written, but also what the spirit of the code is. It would never have occurred or come up if I had not asked for a subdivision of the rural residential section. That zoning area, again, my argument or suggestion is that originally, this parcel, this piece of property should have been divided into two parcels, a commercial highway zone parcel and a rural residential zone parcel. The fact that your staff never followed through with this action to create a map and create that parcel subdivision is something that I cannot explain why it did not happen, but it has not happened. And so with one parcel, when in reality there are virtually two parcels with two zones that are inconsistent with each other.
Director Turner?
I have staff researching the process that did create that rezone. It is likely it was either in Riviera's area plan or a general plan update. That is typically in those larger plans where county-led rezones of property in the county take place due to community visioning process. We have many parcels that are within multiple base zoning districts because they are assigned according to potential use. And so subdivision does not naturally follow, nor does the county lead subdivision projects based off of rezones.
And Chair Pieska, I'd also like to add that this department, my department, has been consistent in requiring half-width frontage improvements for any division of land. We made our comments as part of the original application. Our comments have been public record since we submitted them to community development. They were part of the record that went to the planning commission and was approved by the planning commission. Frankly, an applicant's lack of due diligence to understand what they're doing is not argument for approving appeals. And this is the same recommendation we make on every parcel map. So I think we're consistent, and to suggest otherwise is not accurate. And we're going to stand by our recommendation that the improvements extend for the full length of the property as required by county code.
Okay, thank you. Do we have any more comments from the board? I will open it up to the public. I'm seeing any, check the Zoom room. Okay, I'll close public comment and bring it back to the board.
Chair Pieska, if I may. If your board decides to move to approve the findings of fact and decision, which is the first recommendation, I would recommend that it move to approve the findings of fact and decision as reflected in attachment to the agenda packet, which should reflect all of the corrections, latest corrections that were made.
So moved.
Through the chair, before you have a second.
Well, we have a motion on the table, so what's, you have a last comment?
My concern again is since Director De Leon has indicated that he's moving forward with a complete widening of Red Hills Road, that the, if you accept your staff's recommendations, that it be modified to indicate that we are only responsible for that section of Red Hills Road that abuts our property. Because right now, the way it is written, we would be obligated to do the whole width of, half width of Red Hills Road. Because it reads for the half width of Red Hills Road instead of for the half width section of Red Hills Road adjacent to the property.
Not according to Lake County Code, Section 17-26.6 speaks to the subdivision of land on which any lot or parcel abuts. So I think putting those two together automatically makes it that it's only based on that parcel. So maybe that language by itself might be vague and may seem like it's larger, but the county code that is providing that requirement for improvement is based on a parcel that abuts an existing county maintained road.
My only concern is we've always had up to now a difference of interpretation, understanding of what was happening. And I can imagine 10 years from now, the same kind of thing happening because it may take us 10 years before we find the money to do the half width of section and submit for a subdivision.
And I would suggest.
Lloyd? Go ahead, Lloyd.
Well, again, if it was, if it is a clarifying point, that would be up to staff. That would be Director Turner, Director De Leon. The language that was placed in the findings of fact and decision are word for word directly lifted out of that September 19, 2023 hearing, of which Mr. Jordan was present. The modification made to condition four was lifted from that hearing, word for word.
Should in the future, the Public Works Department try to require the Scotts Valley Energy Corporation to improve the entirety of the length of Red Hills Road, the person representing Scotts Valley Energy Corporation could point to the code where it does state that it is for the length of the parcel that abuts the county maintained road. It is unlikely such a misunderstanding will take place in the future.
Okay, so we have a motion?
Is that on the findings of fact?
Yes.
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Second action?
Move to deny our, yeah, move to deny the appeal?
It would be a motion to grant the appeal in part with condition number.
Oh, that's right.
3.4.
So as is is good?
Yes.
Okay, so I move to grant the appeal in part of condition number 3.4 to parcel map PM 22-02 amended to state prior to the recording of the final map, developers shall submit payment to the Department of Public Works for the half width of Red Hills Road, the county maintained road improvements to conform to the Lake Road Design and Construction Standard 200-A Minor Arterial Road, or complete the required improvements.
I'm going to second for the purposes of discussion.
All in favor?
I would like to discuss this. So before we vote on this, I just want to make sure, and again, we're not relitigating this. Point taken, we just did the findings of fact. But the statement by staff was that we're relying on 17.26. And if we're going to do it, I believe one question might be appropriate. There is a deferral process contained within there that when such widening is not currently needed for health and safety purposes or the already development of the surrounding area, a deferral could at least be considered by the planning commission or on appeal by the board of supervisors. Hypothetically speaking, is staff aware that any deferral has been requested by any subdivider? Have any deferrals been granted for any number of reasons as stated in 17.26?
Staff did process that or did consider that as well during the original tentative map process. There are a number of reasons why it is not appropriate, and those were listed, I think, and discussed in the staff report, or at least in agency comments from the Public Works Department.
Thank you.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
No.
Okay, motion passes. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
All right, someone want to grab Supervisor Crandall? We will go to 7.2. A, consideration of a resolution authorizing application for grant funding under the Regional Climate Collaboratives Program as administered by the Strategic Growth Council. And B, consideration of a draft partnership agreement for the Climate Safe Lake Project and authorization of a designee to sign. And with us, we have our Climate Resiliency Officer, Terry Luxon.
Good afternoon or good morning. Thank you. I'm coming before you with another approval for a big grant. Right now, it's looking like 1.3 or 4 million. It's exciting to consider this, to build the capacity. You heard this morning from the RCD, from Dr. Harry Lyons, about their capacity building efforts, and this would continue that. And along with the RCD, it would build capacity for the Risk Reduction Authority, the grant partner, oh, I have a presentation. Do you want me to do some slides?
Yes, please.
Okay. You need to eject that. And then, do I control it?
Okay.
Thank you. So it is a grant from the Strategic Growth Council, the Regional Climate Collaboratives. This is round two. We applied last year and barely missed getting it. And so we're applying again this year.
So can you talk about who's funding the grant, the partnership?
The.
Grant writing.
Sure. We have a grant writer that works a lot with North Coast Opportunities. And so Supervisor Pieska's discretionary funds and NCO are paying for the grant writer that I'm working with. Thank you very much. And then the grant partners are the Lake County Community Risk Reduction Authority, Scotts Valley Bannapomo Indians, Scotts Valley Energy Corporation, the Lake County Resource Conservation District, and North Coast Opportunities, with the county of Lake being the lead. The Regional Climate Collaboratives Program is a capacity building grant, and what's great about capacity building grants is that's something that everyone's always looking for because it pays for staff, it pays for plans, but it doesn't pay for equipment, which is great because right now we need staff. It enables communities, well, you can read that, but what we're proposing is to build the capacity of the RRA to plan and implement climate change-related projects, create a waste woody biomass utilization and bioenergy biochar development plan, track progress and evaluate grant comes, which is required, as well as peer learning, which is required. And so for the last several years, the Risk Reduction Authority has been looking at how to be a part of the Governor's Office of Planning and Research. They have a biomass utilization pilot project. And so objective one of this grant program, which again comes from the Strategic Growth Council, which is also part of the Governor's Office, is to create actionable plans and projects, a long-term goal, as I was mentioning of the RRAs, to position themselves and the county as a whole to be accepted into the biomass utilization pilot projects of the Governor's Office of Planning and Research, or OPR. Two of OPR's goals are to manage forests to achieve the state's economic and environmental goals and to create a sustainable woods product market in California. And part of that, which I only know just a little bit about with talking with OPR staff, is what comes with it is what's called a BDO zone designation, which is Bioenergy Development Opportunity Zones. And it's part of the state's economic goals includes creating these zones. And to receive this designation, one, we would be accepted into the pilot project, and two, we need a JPA or Joint Powers Authority that can oversee biomass utilization and sales of that biomass. And so the slide has a little bit of information about what a BDO zone is. But the most important thing, or the bottom line, the last bullet, is they can help secure our clean energy future. And we know in Lake County with the geysers, the possible train project, and all of our solar, we're moving forward with renewable energies. And so the goal, OPR has developed five project projects to test new mechanisms for developing long-term feedstock contracts. That's a sticking point. And information, they'll provide information and templates from other pilot projects that will be shared broadly to provide a menu of options for broader adoption. And so those are the four highlighted items that the OPR pilot projects want to do, that we want to position the RRA to be able to take advantage of. And that's just a map of the regions. As you see, Lake County over here is not in it, but that is soon going to change. I know it. So again, round one that we submitted last year, the RRA approved to form a collaborative and apply for the round one grant in October of 22, 2022. The task was to create the same as this year. Create a waste woody biomass utilization bioenergy biochar deployment plan and take initial steps to construct the facility. And those task partners, again, last year were Scotts Valley Bannapomo Indians, RRA members, Clerk, the U.S. Forest Service, TARA, and the RCD. And so this year, under round two, that's changed a little bit because a lot of what we proposed, we being the collaborative, and other agencies have received grants, we've had to change it and it's continued to change as our situation changes. And so the RRA approved in July to go for the round two grant. This year, it required a pre-application, and then those would be invited to submit a full application. I submitted the pre-application by the due date on September 6, and it was accepted, and we were invited to submit a full application, and it's due next Tuesday, or excuse me, next Wednesday. The RRA voted to pursue funding at a special meeting on November 6 to support RRA staffing and a mechanism to ensure financial sustainability while addressing the overabundance of waste woody biomass in Lake County, which has been a goal of the RRA for years. And so what the consultants and this OPR has done, they created an acronym, we all love acronyms, the California Forest Residual Aggregation for Market Enhancement, or CALFRAME. And so there are, the question that it asks is, could a JPA improve forest biomass feedstock supply chains by providing a feedstock supply agreement? That includes a publicly managed price mechanism. So when investors are looking at bioenergy projects, they're looking for a way to sell carbon credits and a way to make sure, you've got a contract for 10 years to get the biomass out of the forest, or out of this neighborhood, or out of the creeks and streams. You know, they're looking for the contracts, and that's a missing piece. And so I'm not going to go over in depth the different types of the JPA models, but what we're proposing in the grant is to, because these are very different structures. There's public infrastructure, a services JPA, or wildfire prevention JPA. And I believe our RRA now is kind of formed under the wildfire prevention JPA. And myself, along with Kevin Ingram, City Manager of Lakeport, and Franklin Velarde from Middletown Rancheria are on the bylaw subcommittee. So we're looking at changing that, but we realized, we're not Lloyd, we're not lawyers, we need to have assistance. So we're putting funding in the grant for a consultant who can work with the RRA to figure out which of the types of JPA models would work best for the RRA and for the county as a whole. And so the other objectives in the grant are to build social infrastructure, center community engagement and decision-making, and develop equity-centered processes. So those are the four, that along with the others, the four objectives. And so with North Coast Opportunities, as you are aware, is the Community Action Agency for Lake and Mendocino County. NCO is going to plan. NCO is going to plan and implement neighborfests throughout the county that will educate and inform all communities in Lake County about emergency preparedness and more, including giving RRA members, like the County of Lake, a venue to engage in community member, to engage community members throughout the county in, like, for instance, the general plan update, or the climate adaptation plan, the evacuation route planning, the surveys that I have to go back out, the work that NCO's doing, Red Cross is doing, and many other agencies, to have the funding to plan these family-friendly events. Because I did several of them over the summer, and they're wonderful. You get a couple hundred people, there's food, there's activities for children, there's games, and there's real education and community engagement. And so the, which is a major goal of the Strategic Growth Council, is to be able to engage the communities where they are. And that's the beauty of the neighborfest. Like, we did one in Spring Valley, we did one in the Riviera's. And so they're very hyper-local. And so throughout the adapt, oh, excuse me, let's see, where did I miss off? So before your board next week, I'm going to go over the Adaptation Planning Grant that we were awarded. But we're using one of the deliverables in that grant as an in-kind in this one, which is that the RRA directors and participants will receive diversity, equity, and inclusion training. There'll be a kickoff event, and then annually. And so we're going to use that as in-kind in our grant application. And so in summary, the peer learning objective in our grant application, while it's required, is also something that my position, as well as the Lake County Fire Safe Council and other RRA participants are tasked to do, which is getting out the word of preparedness, you know, defensible space, all of the things that we have been talking about, but to do it more and to do it consistently. And this will allow all of the agencies that are doing that work to have a platform to do it. But we will also create a waste woody biomass utilization and bioenergy biochar deployment plan. That includes hiring a full-time executive director and a biomass program manager for the Risk Reduction Authority, which has been the missing piece, right since, let's see, Carol, your board allowed Carolyn Purdy and myself to assist the RRA after NCO's contract ended. So she and I did that January, February, and March. And since then, the RCD received funding. And you may have met Elisa, who works with Jade Conservation Collective, and she's been providing administrative support to the RRA since then, about eight to 10 hours a month. But it takes much, much more than that. So to have paid staff, additional staff will be great. And then contract with a consultant to lead the RRA through the process to determine what JPA formation changes are needed, and to assist the bylaws update subcommittee of the RRA to make changes, track progress and evaluate grant outcomes, which is required, and peer learning, which is required. And so that's just an overview of what we're going to apply for to try to help Lake County. And, oh, and then also in your packet is a draft, well, there's the resolution, and then there's a draft partnership agreement template. And the reason it's not more fleshed out is, as I mentioned, it just kind of keeps changing because we've had some really-
Big.
Big news.
News. So Terry and I have been working for the past couple of years, Terry one year longer, to get into this pilot program that she has outlined. And it's already in year two of the, and do you want to put the map up?
Okay. That one?
That one. So we have been selected, we got the news last Wednesday, that we are the newest pilot project for the state of California with the Governor's Office of Planning and Research. We're so excited. We've been working really, really hard to land this and showing the need. We've, we've done a dead tree tour, we've done just about everything possible, and all that effort has paid off. And starting in January, we will probably start to see the first of that funding. So it's absolutely critical that we maintain this path with building out this capacity. We will be receiving support from the Governor's Office of Planning and Research, but it won't be enough. We have a lot of catching up to do. The, the things that they found most enticing that allow us to enter into this later is we already have the JPA in place, we just have to modify some things in the bylaws. And, and we have a never-ending supply of feedstock, both from our past fires, our forest health projects that the RCD mentioned earlier, and continued fuels breaks and, you know, defensible space and all of the things. So the disposal, the disposal piece has been missing for a long, long time. And this is an opportunity for us, not just to complete that piece and find a solution, but to invite industry and really figure out how we can turn this into an opportunity for Lake County. So I'm really excited, but it's going to be a lot of work. So this was an important grant opportunity that we barely missed last year. It's even more important now. So hopefully, the Strategic Growth Council and OPR work really closely together. So that's why we've, we've layered in so many of the things that we've talked about at this presentation and earlier. The conversation continues. We, we always are strategic in our projects. And last year's focus was on the cap, which we got in funding through the other grant, the APGP grant, that we'll learn more about later in December. So I'm just really excited to bring this all to you. And if you have any questions, let us know. And then deadline is next week. Supervisor Spatier?
I think Supervisor-
Oh, Supervisor Green.
Thank you. Very exciting. Let's get this done. My only question is technical. I see two recommended actions. I see in the REZO, at the bottom of page one, the REZO would appoint the CAO or designate as an agent and signatory to execute all documents, including agreements. But on the staff report, there's a recommended action to designate a signatory for the agreement coming up. So I guess we could double designate if needed, but my question is if the REZO covers that, or if that second recommended action is needed.
So yes, on its face, the resolution should cover that. The second requested action to designate a signatory for the partnership agreement may stem from whatever grant funding requirements there may be in place. And if so, if that's the case, that can be accomplished by motion.
Is there a separate requirement that we can't have this master REZO do it? We have to make a separate finding?
I don't think so. My intent, my intent at least, was to not have to come back before your board for the draft partnership agreement template. So whatever, you know, and we have to submit the resolution with the grant and the draft with the grant, but we don't have to sign the, or send in or with the application, a finalized partnership agreement template.
Supervisor Spatier?
Yeah, definitely in the right direction, in the sense that I know I've been given the RRA a little bit of a hard time about the leadership and the use of our county staff. Don't want to stop what the RRA is doing, but definitely want to support in getting the grant funding to get that executive director leadership because it's absolutely necessary. The work is not just check a box and move paperwork on. It, it's going to require some heavy lifting to get some of these projects moving, especially in the direction that you're looking at to become a broker in the biomass market. So love where this is going, support it. What I wanted to add, and I spoke with Terry earlier today, we talk a lot in there about firewise communities. There's a lot of stuff about fuel reductions. There's a lot of stuff that, it doesn't specify wildfires within the document, but it's kind of leading towards the idea of such. And I just want to make sure we don't forget flooding, where biomass creates similar issues and impacts. Last year was massive flooding issues for the state of California. We anticipate more of that this year. And I just think it would, if we can add that in there, it would be a potential benefit in reviewing the application and seeing that this provides for both reduction of risk for fire hazard and reduction of risk for flood hazard.
And I think that's a really good point, and thank you for reminding me of it. We recently had a conversation with California Fish and Wildlife about having the seas or the, the Conservation Corps doing stream bed clearing. And one of the issues that they ran into was what to do with the vegetation they were pulling out. And so, you know, finding a long-term mechanism for just that issue, because we need to do more stream clearing to protect hitch habitat and to prevent flooding, particularly in Scotts Valley, along Scotts Valley Road. And then we've got the Middle Creek Restoration Area coming up. Yes. So when it comes to flooding issues, agricultural prunings, crop conversions, there's, there's a lot of biomass that we need to mitigate, and it can, you know, bring income to the county instead of pile burning it.
And in my comments, I don't doubt that we would have taken whatever biomass is available to, to, to move into the direction of turning into biochar or whatever it is that we'll turn into. It's more of what's the rubric for the grant? And if we add that language in the application, does it help us to potentially reach the number we're looking for in order to not miss it this year?
Right. Thank you.
Okay. Supervisor Crandall?
Just to add to the vegetation, because we can't necessarily do any work underground or pull roots, it, it does help to just take that vegetation out because it grows back quickly, just constant. And so since we're sitting here waiting on permits, and then they get lapsed, and then they move forward because of another, you know, permit not lining with another, this could be a way to, I mean, I know it's a little more work here and there, but it provides more biochar if we can get that from the streams. Yeah. So I appreciate you mentioning that about the floods.
Yeah. Obviously glad to have this conversation here today. I know we pulled together the special meeting pretty quickly with the RRA board because, you know, the conversation needed to happen with the whole board, and it was well-attended that day to help us move forward with this opportunity. So I think we're moving in the right direction. I think Supervisor Spatier, you touched on the main thing. We've talked about it for years, that executive director position is the missing key. You heard that from RCD today when they were able to get that accomplished. You know, what leaps and bounds have changed, and we're right on that cusp. Well, appreciate the support today. I want to thank Supervisor Pyska, Chair Pyska, and Terry for really pushing this down the path to get completed. The OPR news is big. So yeah, support today from the board is going to take that step, I think, that is really going to move the RRA forward in the right direction we've all been wanting it to go. So the collaboration efforts that are happening throughout the county are unbelievable. So yeah, looking for support today.
Yes. And I just want to thank everybody that's been participating in these grant meetings for the last two years. It's been a big push. But having a climate officer now who has this in their job description really enables the county to participate in ways that we haven't been before. So it's almost been a year since you've been here, and there's just been incredible strides made.
Thank you.
Okay, open it up for the public. If you have any public comment. Not seeing any in Zoom, so I'll bring it back to the board for action.
I offer the resolution.
I will get to that. That's all right. Good.
All right. Supervisor Simon?
Yes.
Supervisor Sabatier?
Aye.
Supervisor Crandall?
Yes.
Supervisor Green?
Aye.
And Supervisor Pyska?
Yes. Yeah, do the-
Part two?
Yeah.
All right. Falling behind today.
Designate a signatory for the partnership agreement.
Yeah, so moved. Who, CAO?
No, I didn't say.
CAO or designee?
CAO or your designee, should we put it that way?
Okay.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes. We're so excited.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, Terry.
Good job, Terry.
Next week.
Thank you, Terry.
So we can do calendars now, so we can get that finished before lunch. So who would like to start?
Ms. Chair?
Yes. Oh.
Chair, you may want to wish to wait to do calendars till we return back from lunch since the 1:00, maybe continue to another day.
Okay.
Time.
All right. So we'll come back at 1:00. Okay, welcome back. Our 6.91 PM item, A, consideration of real property purchase and sale agreement of 5245 Third Street, Kelseyville, California, 95451, contingent upon the approval of the general plan conformity report, and B, consideration of lease agreement between the County of Lake and Kelseyville Senior Center, Inc., and authorize the chair to sign.
Thank you, Madam Chair. We respectfully request that this item be continued to December 19th at 11 o'clock, due to noticing requirements.
Okay. Any questions from the board? Anything from the public? Not in Zoom anymore. Do we have anybody in Zoom?
No.
Okay. Then I'll bring it back to the board. Do we need a motion for that?
Your board could approve it by motion.
19th, 12?
19th at 11 o'clock.
So moved. I'd like to move this item to December 19th at 11 a.m. And I forget the number, 6.9.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Motion passes. Thank you.
Aye.
And we are just about to start our next item. 1:15 a.m., 6:10, A, consideration of request to waive the competitive bidding process to, for data management software pursuant to Lake County Code, Chapter 2, Section 38.4, and B, consideration of proposed agreement between the County of Lake and OpenGov for electronic permitting software and services for the Community Development Department. And we have Director Turner.
Thank you. Miraya Turner, Community Development Department. I know I've been back for a little over a year right now, but this is my absolute hands-down most favorite item to bring to you that since I've returned. So you have before you today an agreement with, between the county and OpenGov for an electronic permitting software and services. So I am going to hand it over to Deputy Administrator Shannon Walker Smith for details, but can just let you know that our department is eagerly anticipating all of the many, many systemic improvements that await us with this new system. And as Acela, as we are in that, almost in the middle of our three-year agreement with Acela, the timing for this dovetails just perfectly because we'll still be using the current system while building the next system.
Great.
I will turn it over to Shannon.
Good afternoon. Thank you. So you have before you a three, four, three and a half year contract with OpenGov. It is a company that we have been vetting now long. Before I came to community development, staff has been working over the last couple of years looking for an alternative to Acela. You have the documents for the piggyback exemption as part of our purchasing policy. And so hopefully, all of those documents are in order, and you've had a chance to review them. But we intend to move forward with this contract. Not only is it going to give us a public-facing portal for the community to be able to start their permitting applications and land use applications, we're also going to be able to use it as a data tracking system for all three divisions. Building is the only division currently very successfully using the Acela product that we've been committed to. So we're very excited to get a data management software up and running for both code enforcement and planning. It's going to dovetail with our data ticket contract- It's going to dovetail with our data ticket contract and make it much more efficient for us to process notices of violation for code enforcement and just so many of the processes. It's also going to, we're going to do a major data migration from a lot of past databases, and so we're hoping that will also result in a single source of truth for our department, where we will, all staff will have access to all the information that exists historically on parcels and APNs and property addresses. So, we're very excited for that piece as well, and we also think it's going to make us tremendously efficient in responding to the public, both at the counter and to PRA requests, with all of our data being in one location. Yeah, it's going to the public-facing portal, will also have the ability to process credit card payments. We worked diligently with Patrick and Genevieve from the Auditor's Office to ensure that we're all on the same page, that we have, are going to work through an appropriate timeline for their departments, for their part of those processes that they need to take on. And so, we've had a lot of conversations about that. And we also have two representatives from OpenGov on Zoom who just wanted to share a couple of slides and be available to answer any of your questions as well. So, we are going to have Greg and Brant join us now for just a short presentation.
Awesome. Thanks, everyone. Can you hear me okay?
Yes.
Awesome. Well, yes, thank you very much for the opportunity to present to you today and for the opportunity to work with the county. Shannon and Mariaa and everyone else that we worked with have been amazing to work with over the last, you know, year-plus. So, just really excited for this opportunity. I just wanted to share a couple of slides to introduce you to OpenGov. I know a lot of you have heard of us before, but let me start sharing my screen really quickly. All right, and so, in case you have heard of us, maybe heard of us in a different area of what we do, I always like to start off with kind of the big picture of OpenGov. We do work with over 1,800 agencies across the nation, across these five core applications, budgeting, procurement, financials, asset management, permitting. Permitting is the one that we're going to be working on with you all, and that is up for consideration, really, when we consider our permitting and licensing suite. There are four key areas that we focus in on. Shannon just mentioned that there is a public portal, so that your community members are going to be able to access all the different types of building, planning, and code, applications, and workflows that they might need to engage on when they click submit, if there are fees to be paid. It all gets routed to the appropriate workflow and streamlining the review process, which is a really labor-intensive part of the processing for county staff. There's ability to have in-app collaboration, so that if I'm a resident waiting on a building permit, I can see where I'm at any, at any point. If I'm the reviewer, the inspector, I can communicate with that applicant, and really gives you the full control for staff to really own the platform and design it for the various specific needs that the county has. And last thing to say is, our permitting and licensing suite is designed to be expanded upon. So, what we are working with you on originally, or in the beginning, is going to be building, planning, and code, but a lot of these other use cases are on the table as well, and it's something that we're really excited about, and it's really a partnership that we see growing for many years to come. So, just wanted to share those slides, and happy to answer any questions.
I did forget to mention in my presentation that both the City of Lakeport and the City of Clearlake are using OpenGov. We were able to go and visit with the City of Lakeport. We saw what it's like on their back end to manage the applications, to create new applications, to, and their staff is managing all that in-house. You know, with Acela, we currently have an in-house person, plus we have to have a contract with another company that, to help us manage it. So, we're feeling very comfortable that this is a product that we'll be able to interface with very easily on the back end and really make it very custom for what we, what we want and need. And the benefit of a public-facing portal that's cross-jurisdictional is that the public will be able to create one login that would work across the platform for whatever jurisdiction they happen to be applying for, some kind of a permit or making a complaint. So, it'll become something that our residents in Lake County will become very familiar with, regardless of which jurisdiction they happen to be interacting with at that time.
Yay. All right. I know we had a long conversation about this over a year ago, but excited to be moving forward. Do we have any comments from the Board? Supervisor Sabatier?
Appreciate the work that's gone into bringing this to our attention. I know I've met with OpenGov on multiple subjects as well. Definitely seen the program in action over at the City of Clearlake, both on the front end as well as the back end. I, I'll just at least speak to the history of this. Where we are is not good. How we got here is not good. I want to make sure that we move forward in the correct way, because we acquired Acela, I don't even know the specific date, but I'm going to say 2016, didn't actually really put it fully into practice until way later, and even then, it's only being partially used. We increased the number of licenses, made it three years. I wish we had been a little bit more cautious in our progress of wanting to utilize a program that we were not yet able to wrap our arms around. So, here I do see, obviously, there's some training, there's going to be the whole moving of data from one area to the new software. I see training, but I don't, and maybe it's just not something that I have access to, but I don't see, what is the expectations of the training? Because I've gone through these massive upgrades from one system to another. You go through a quick training, and you're so new to what you just saw, that you only kept maybe 10% to 20% of that information, and the other percent is the important part to make sure that you can send out bills and invoices and all those other things. Is there a set kind of checklist or expectation of what should be learned and realized through that training, just in case that we need to go back to OpenGov and say, hey, we're really struggling with this? Can we go through another training specifically for these items? Is that available? Is that within the cost that's being provided, or would that be at an extra cost? I just, I worry, changing systems is not a simple thing. Everybody does it, but at the same time, it, specific steps need to be taken.
It is going to be an enormous project for our department, and we do have built-in to the contract, some, not just training, but onsite training, where OpenGov will come out. There'll be both, like, a front-end training program where the, you know, the folks in our department who are utilizing the software mostly with customers will certainly go through an extensive training, but there will also be training for those of us who will be operating on the back end, and that will be a separate and additional training. I'll hand it over to Brant and Greg to talk about any, anything they'd like to add about training.
Yeah, for sure. I can, I can add in, Brant, let me know if you have anything to add as well. So, we do have a specific section in our scope of work that calls out the various training deliverables. They're bucketed into three sections. There's an administrator and configuration training, there's an end-user training, and then there's the onsite training. I will say that there's going to be usually weekly or bi-weekly meetings over the course of this project, where your staff, the key administrators, will get hands-on and own the workflow and development. Those are not counted as specific trainings. Those are going to be the hands-on work that happens as we work together to build out the workflows and applications. I believe that in this scope of work, we have extra training. I think they're specifically called out 42 hours of specific administrative training, eight hours of reporting training, six hours of end-user training, and two days of onsite training. So, we hear you loud and clear, Supervisor, and I personally have been working with, not just Mariaa, but Mariaa's predecessor and the predecessors before that, on this idea of, of kind of how to make sure that this project is successful. And so, we made sure to put in a lot of buffer on specific training, and then the ongoing training is built into the price as well. So, no additional money needed for more training.
Yep. Thank you for that. Next is the overall picture of where we are technologically here at the county with all of our software. There is work happening, not going to say through the TGC, the Technical Technology Group Committee, but it's kind of originating from there. There's an RFP out for a consultant for finding the next accounting software, obviously making sure things connect. I'm hoping that it's possible to continue the communication of your incorporation of this software, to let the TGC know how things are running and how things are working, and that way, we can also, the TGC can keep you up to date as to where we are, so we can figure out sooner than later how we're going to be able to blend whatever upcoming accounting software that we end up bringing in, because there are going to be some definite connections we would love to see, rather than making it inefficient in that way. Unfortunately, we're not at a point that we can say, this is what we're using, does this work? And with the situation you have, holding you back would actually be more harmful than good, the way that you're situated with the licenses that you're not necessarily using to the fullest potential, and the inefficiencies. I know I can't go up to the third floor and say, I want to, can you give me a list of all the projects happening in District 2? That should be a click of a button, not a asking everybody all around you type of thing. And so, it's very inefficient in understanding what is happening in that department from an outside perspective. So, I'd love to remedy those things, so moving it forward. I know there's some questions, most likely about where I stand on the waiving of the bidding. I would love to see an RFP. At the same time, you're not going to find 20 companies that do this type of software. I know that you've done multiple demos with different companies, and that you've come to this one, and again, the fact that we already have one that we've tried and is not working for us, have demoed others and seen, experienced in other county jurisdictions here in Lake County, I'm okay with the waiving of the bidding process. So, that's where I stand, and I hope that that can be the direction from the Board, is to continue that conversation with the TGC, just because blending those two softwares is going to be really important for efficiency purposes.
We are absolutely happy to give regular updates to the TGC. It may be that other departments then would find a use for some of the other modules that OpenGov offers. So, yeah, we're more than happy to keep you updated.
Great. Supervisor Green?
Yeah, thank you. Number one, excited to see this move forward, excited to see happy faces from CDD, but some concerns as well. I'm kind of concerned about the dispensing with an RFP in this, if only because whether it's Acela or OpenGov or some others, what they call it, Software as a Service, these SaaS models are incredibly difficult to read and understand as far as the scope of services. So, whether it's Acela or OpenGov, show me the modules, tell me what they do, show me the workflows, figure out what plugs in. And so, I want, I definitely want to support this, but as far as some concerns like Supervisor Sabatier mentioned, it should be point and click, show me projects in a district and all that. My specific ask has been, show me active cannabis permits in the county. I don't care about the software platforms, just what can we do to do transparency? So, and I don't see a real, other than ongoing discomfort with Acela, which is like, okay, everyone stand up, but the cost breakdown, you know, what's the cost comparison between Acela and some modules we may not be fully utilizing? And this proposal, again, with some modules, they're going to take some training and mastery and, and absent some direction, specific direction, to, for example, create a public-facing portal on the website that will export this. And another concern might be integration with government processes. So, for example, if we're processing our use permits in OpenGov, but our granted permit people have to go dive back into Acela when they're dealing with the state, you know, is that a seamless transition? So, I guess, you know, I definitely want to support this, but I can't compare and contrast. I can't really fully understand the discomfort with Acela. I don't know the relative budget amounts, so I don't know if we're going up, holding steady, seeing some cost savings, and I don't, I don't understand where the Acela modules might be either deficient or underutilized in some aspects, but these modules are superior. So, whether it's the vendor or staff or some combination thereof, can you just maybe hit on a bullet point as far as public-facing data sets and what we can do to expand upon that? And this is the Better Mouse Trap? I'd love to hear about that, and I'd also love to hear about the cost-effectiveness of where we're at now and what we're proposing here today.
I'm happy to start with the, let's build a better mousetrap part of your inquiry. Ever since, I think, the first Acela agreement was signed by Director Kowel, and then subsequent to, to the two next directors tried to get it implemented, but it, it was such a time-intensive task just on staff at that time, of which I was one, that it never really got implemented. Somehow, and I don't really understand how, the agreement was renewed regularly, every one year, three years, things like that, and, and before that, we would always have such frustration within the team, within the staff team, of how difficult and cumbersome it was to actually create the program that we needed, that it would, it would seem like we were, we were all leaning toward, or the department was leaning toward not renewing the contract. But systematically, like regularly, right before every contract, the Acela would reach out to the director and say, oh, well, it's just because this hasn't been clicked, or it's just because you didn't have that module. And the agreement would get renewed again. And that's what happened just this last time with our latest director before I got here. And what I'm looking forward to in this new Better Mouse Trap is a more hands-on staff with OpenGov, more direct support. We have more experience regionally with our, with our colleagues in the cities, who already also have experience with it and are thrilled with the product. It is less likely, I anticipate it is less likely that we're going to go to sleep with one system and wake up the next day with Acela and have a new bug, all of a sudden, new. Can't understand it, can't figure it, it was working yesterday, but no, now it's not. And so, that's why we have to have a full-time business services analyst on staff, is just to keep Acela afloat, let alone, I mean, just forget planning. You know, he was trying, he, he had a priority to, to create the planning module when I first got here, but we were so glitchy and irritatingly inefficient on the building permit side that I took planning off the table. We've just never been able to get planning up and running, because his full-time job is fixing all the glitches to keep building up and running. Code enforcement, as Supervisor Sabatier, has, has put in so much time to try to assist us with our permitting and our records-keeping and all that stuff on the code enforcement side, because to do so in Acela was not reasonable. And, and so, we still don't have much going on in code enforcement as well. So, what I'm looking forward to in this new mousetrap is that is a program that has modules that we don't have to recreate the wheel. We, they are already familiar with our planning processes, because we really don't do things all that differently, other than every other planning division in the state. We still have all the same processes, and so, they are more familiar and willing to help, unlike Acela, which says, oh, well, we're not really going to assist you, why don't you pay another company, true point, to assist you to work our product? So, not only have we had a full-time embedded staff person, we've also had a whole secondary agreement for a whole other company that's supposed to come in and help us with Acela. We, we don't anticipate that level of disconnection with OpenGov as we move forward. In all of, I have, part of my job was investigating this exact same electronic permitting system type of upgrade for the City of Ukiah while I was there, so I've kind of been working on this for two years, just going through so many different demos. And there are products out there that would put us right back where we were with Acela, the whole recreate the wheel, build it like an erector set, kind of, kind of cobble-together a program, and it is more of a holistic system, the modules that are more intuitive and easier to, to wrap our head around, so that we can tweak stuff that we need or create stuff that we want the way we want it. With OpenGov, it's just like night and day. So, this mousetrap is going to rock. This is going to be a great mousetrap, and we are, we are so excited to start this transition over, to something that's more intuitive and approachable to staff, and to, to increase our intuitive and approachable to staff and to, to increase our efficiency in our services to the public.
And of these model, of these modules, can you speak to the transparency aspects of it? How can this help the public and, and grumpy supervisors keep track of what's going on in a public-facing way?
Yeah, there's, the portal allows the applicant for what, or complaint, you know, whatever they're accessing on the site to go back and check the status of wherever their application at. So the workflow is built into the product. And then we both are working as staff through the workflow on that backend, but the, but the user, the front-facing user also can see where their project is at in the workflow. So that will be quite helpful. There's also, you know, several types of permits that we might be able to move to a completely over-the-counter process where somebody might not ever even have to come in to the building department to get a permit to change their hot water heater or do some plumbing work. So we're trying as much as we can to move forward to more progressive systems. And to address a couple of your other questions about funding structure, so we're currently paying about $80,000 a year to Exela. We do have to finish that contract, but as Director Turner mentioned, it takes about a year to implement. And so we're in, we're in a good timeline. We're going to build out the modules for code enforcement first, planning second, leaving building on Exela because it's working relatively well for them. And they'll be the last of the three divisions to come over in, in about a year's timeline. We're going to be paying about $100,000 a year, but again, we, we then also would not have to have the TruePoint contract, which we're paying on top of the $80,000 for Exela. And we'll be able to repurpose our business services analyst a little bit to help out with some other priorities in the department. So it's about a break even in terms of cost. And then just to talk a little bit about the RFP process, I just want to ensure the board that, you know, we really have done our due diligence, even though we didn't take this product to RFP. This has been our entire management team over a couple, you know, at least a year's time vetting a bunch of different products and having a lot of conversations. Because, you know, when you go to RFP, all of these companies will provide a beautiful proposal for you, right? But what we have really done that I think is even almost stronger than an RFP process is we have talked to a lot of jurisdictions and not just Lakeport and Clear Lake, but Napa and a bunch of other jurisdictions that our chief building official is connected to and our code enforcement manager is connected to. So they've, we've done a lot of outreach.
Thank you. Thank you for all the work that you've done on this. And when we've had these conversations before at the board level, I don't, we weren't presented with the, the recommendation to move towards OpenGov, and I think that's what's different today. And I really appreciate that, and I could see your enthusiasm. And it's exciting to move forward.
Probably our whole department is upstairs just hoping that this is going to get the go-ahead because everyone's very excited to have something that might work for us. And just as an example, you know, without code, you know, code enforcement being an example of not having a database, you know, we have some grant funds, $3 million in grant funds we're trying to manage. We've been keeping that data in binders because we don't have a sufficient data tracking software to manage this data. So we're, I mean, it's going to make an incredible difference to, to what we can do up there.
And the Excel worksheet we get sent once a week. Supervisor Crandall.
Yes. I think this is going to be very beneficial. I know we usually are concerned about the, the funding or the spending we're going to put on this, but I really, I know the amount of energy, time, and things left under the table that aren't getting done because of the lack of what Exela can do. Because Maria, you've been to my municipal advisory committees answering the same question from month to month, giving an update that they've asked for, where this can provide that. Can this, one quick question, can this, does this give the opportunity for someone that's concerned about a project in their vicinity to look at the permitting process?
I do think that we will be able to give the supervisors all a login for the, for the portal. And you guys would be able to take a look and access information out of the system yourselves.
And that'll be good, but what I mean is like a community that's living in the area.
And I'll let Greg shake his head if I'm wrong, or Brent, but I think that we are also going to hook up to our GIS system. So someone can say, I have a concern with what's going on over there, and they can go click on it and see if there are any permits in process.
Right.
So it actually will help save us time because they won't be reaching out to you, who then has to reach out to us, or they won't be reaching out to us, who then has to look it up. All that information will be right there.
And I'll be glad for them to reach out to me so I can show them how to use this and then go forward from there. This, this gives me something, rather than trying to set another meeting and talking about it and then going to the next meeting and seeing there either is or what, or, you know, this didn't happen, that didn't happen, so now let's set another meeting, taking you away from another, one of your many responsibilities as well. So, so that's where I see this, is it's, it's going to minimize some of the gains and drains, especially when it comes to FOIAs. This, this will give people the opportunity to ask for documents and get them without having to go through a process and, you know, put you guys in a position to have to.
We haven't talked about that aspect of it yet, so I'm not sure how that will integrate or if it will integrate into this process because we do have a staff person who is our central kind of gatekeeper of public record act requests, complaints, things like that, to make sure we're not dropping the ball. Where I see this as being beneficial is, is on the public side, instead of them fretting for days before, because they don't want to contact us or they're worried or something, they can just click on the computer and find it out right there in real time. And so it will probably save a lot of frustration for members of the public as well.
All right. Yeah, I think this is good. It'll streamline some things and I think it's a good move in the right direction.
Supervisor Sabatier.
Yeah, just as a comment to my colleague Supervisor Green, for this specific topic, I feel like we're bleeding right now. We've got to stop the bleeding. This isn't, this is a very imperfect way of maybe going about it, but at the same time, something has to be done to change the fact that this is how we've been for far too long and we got to make that change. I do have one last question, and that's the reporting part. Does the system provide, I believe it does, because Greg's been showcasing this for the past three years, hoping that we would bite. I believe that it has kind of drop-in report mechanisms so that we can create our own reports, so that it's meaningful what we get out of it, rather than already pre-ordained reports that are part of the software. That way, we don't have to pay OpenGov for any new type of report that maybe the board is asking for or that you feel you need to review yourself. So I'm getting a yes. So that's what I thought.
Beautiful report creator. You can query just about anything you have in the database. And then also, we'll be very involved in the workflow development, and we're going to be doing that with an eye on reporting so that we can pull out at a touch of a button pretty much all the things that we'll want to see in-house that you guys would want to access. And then in addition to that, we'll be able to query pretty much all data that's housed in there.
Supervisor Green.
Yeah, it's just, I know it's nuanced, but I just want to clarify. I hear that our modules have built-in functionality that a client, basically a registrant who is an applicant will be able to log in and track some workflows. But our question is about, you know, broader community transparency, maybe that functionality is not appropriate because they're not technically an applicant. So within the existing modules, you know, is there transparency features that would allow views to be embedded on a website that could present aggregated data, like here's active permit applications within a given supervisory district or a given zip code? And will have some level of factionality, functionality for inquiry, not for a project applicant, just for a member of the general public? And that would require a user registration as well?
I'm going to hand that question over to OpenGov team.
Yeah, I'll let Brent take it.
Yeah, absolutely. Thank you for the question. So we absolutely can enable that without registration. So residents, members of the public can come online and search by location to see specific permits by location or lack of permits, as sometimes is, is the case as well. And then also build out reports and have those reports available to the public based on permits by district, permits by type, various, you know, open permits versus closed permits. So yes, absolutely. And then as part of our, our training and our product is that, you know, as, as those different inquiries come up, staff's going to be equipped and enabled to, to create additional types of reports and permit, on permit data and license data as, as they see fit and as you request.
So all those things are baked in to the existing modules presented today for approval? I'm not asking for the moon or some add-on module down the road, right?
You are not asking for the moon at all. That's part of the, the package that we will deliver.
Okay, thank you.
Final comment. Glad that this is here today, too. The two things, obviously, which, you know, we heard about this on the Economic Development Committee we had formed a few years back. We've had many different conversations and been able to see the program. The most encouraging thing, I think, just as you said, Bruno, we've got to start over. This is probably not the best way to do it, but the most encouraging things that, you know, I want to talk about is the software's been vetted by the Technical Governments Committee. I remember coming on as an early supervisor in those conversations, as we had things that were purchased without talking to the IT department or the technical governments or, right, what did I say? Yeah, governance committee, all those things need to be vetted before we go on purchasing these systems. So everybody knows it can, has a chance to talk to everybody. I know we're not going to get everything that's promised, but as long as it's a system that functions and we can make it work well for the entire county, I think it's important. I did like the public-facing features that were opportunities there, not just for your department, but all departments throughout the county. So glad that it's here today. And like I said, the most encouraging thing is we're not just out buying computer stuff for each department in different ways where they don't talk to each other. Hopefully, this is going to be something that integrates the entire county and really makes the end user, our constituents, an easier way to do things as they're coming here. How to get to yes, we're always looking for that, and let's hope this is that step towards that. So that's my comment. I support the project, so good job.
Okay, I'm going to open it up to the public. Do you have anyone in the chambers or the Zoom room? Any hands up? Okay, I'll bring it back to the board for action.
Madam Chair, I will go ahead and motion, where is it at? Sorry. To waive the competitive bidding process for data management software pursuant, pursuant to Lake County Code, Chapter 2, Section 38.4.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Post.
Madam Chair, I am motion to approve the agreement between the County of Lake and OpenGov for electronic permitting software and services through FY 2026 and 2027.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Post. Oh, you can hear CDD stuff.
Thank you guys very much.
Thank you so much. Okay, 6.11, our 1:45 PM item, consideration of letter of support for Calwild State Coastal Conservancy grant funding request to support Upper Eel River watershed community visioning process. This is from Supervisors Crandall and Sabatier, and it looks like we've got staff here as well.
It's good afternoon, Supervisors. Matthew Rothstein, Chief Deputy County Administrative Officer. As you will be aware, Supervisors Crandall and Sabatier have been strong advocates for Lake County's priorities surrounding Lake Pillsbury. Your board and staff engaged in this area of priority have been consistent in stating Lake County's opposition to removal of Scott Dam. Unequivocally, your board has stated that is Plan A. Additionally, with no entity having emerged to assume operation of the Potter Valley project, we have a need to be positioned and prepared to provide community-supported priorities for restoration of the currently inundated and surrounding areas that strongly consider and reflect Lake County's needs. If their project is funded, Calwild is committed to assisting with those Plan B considerations through their proposed visioning process. For clarity, Calwild's funding application has already been submitted. Since submittal, the environment surrounding the proposed decommissioning has changed to a certain extent, and Calwild staff have acknowledged a need to work closely with the Coastal Conservancy and others to make adjustments as needed in what is truly a developing situation. And I want to be clear, the matter before your board today is an opportunity to submit a letter of support for Calwild's application. As drafted, there are multiple statements that indicate dam removal is proposed and not certain at this stage, which are intended to signal your board's continued opposition to dam removal. Staff can appreciate, though, that members of your board and the public may wish that that statement be clarity, be strengthened, to strengthen the clarity of the distinction that there are those Plan A and Plan B scenarios. And so Johanna, if you can project the version I sent you. So the following proposed language could be added, to just clarify further. The Lake County Board of Supervisors has maintained consistent opposition to removal of Scott Dam, Plan A, if you will. Additionally, we recognize should removal of Scott Dam prove inevitable, restoration and redevelopment of the currently inundated and surrounding areas must be undertaken as responsibly as possible, Plan B. The visioning process Calwild's application would provide for is supportive of those Plan B interests. Ryan Henson and Mark Green of Calwild are here in the board chambers today to respond to any questions that your board may have and the public may have. If it pleases your board, Calwild staff can likewise offer some remarks now.
It's a pleasure to appear before you again. I'm Mark Green from Calwild. This project arises out of a difficult situation. The question of what is to happen with these dams has been in the air for decades now. And unfortunately, we at Calwild view one possible future as being very similar to what happened on the removal of the dams on the Klamath, which would be that Lake County would basically be left with nothing if the dam is removed. If the dams are taken out, then PG&E will go away and that will be the end result. That's what happened to Siskiyou County up in the Klamath. And we feel that there's both an injustice in that and that the best conservation outcome is the implementation of opportunities for recreation, for fire resilience, for forest management, all of those kinds of pieces that PG&E and the fisheries agencies aren't really going to pay attention to. So this community visioning process is designed to draw together stakeholders, tribes, property owners, agencies, all of those that have a voice and an interest in this, residents, people that have something to say about, about the future of what happens here. The decision about whether or not the dams come out is not really, it's not our area. We've never taken a position on it one way or another, and we have no intention of doing so. What we can do, however, is we can bring people together to talk and to identify ways that we can improve recreational opportunities, economic development through tourism, fire resilience, and all those other things that will benefit the future of the county and the Upper Eel drainage. So that is the project that's before you, and I'm happy to answer any questions you may have. Our senior policy director, Ryan Henson, is also here to answer questions.
Supervisor Sabatier or Scrutal?
Go ahead. You have anything to add? So I just want to add, you mentioned Siskiyou, and I was just talking to my colleagues earlier during our lunch break, met with Supervisor Ed Valenzuela from Siskiyou County, asked him how everything was going with the decommissioning of the dams in Klamath. And, and what he stated to me was, Bruno, don't put your feet in the dirt and try to hit the brakes on anything happening. I wish we had looked at a Plan B. Obviously, we are going to continue to advocate for the dam. We feel there's a great reason, not just for Lake County, but the whole entire region, for the purpose of having a dam up there. But if we don't start planning for a different outcome, we may just end up with what was submitted by PG&E since this has been on the agenda. PG&E does not have anything in their decommissioning plan right now about restoration, about anything that cares for what Lake County would like to see. And without us pushing for this Plan B simultaneously while looking to make sure we still get our Plan A, we're not going to get anything. And so And so personally, I didn't see anything that was in the letter that was offensive towards the views of Lake County when it comes to Potter Valley Project. The added language helps to clarify and ensure that it's recognized, that we're not just saying, okay, I guess we're done shrugging our shoulders. But without a plan, you're only going to get what you're given, and we got to be at the table to figure out how we can manage what the outcomes will be. And so I think our job here is to manage outcomes, and I appreciate the relationship that we've built with Calwild over the past few months in trying to figure out what is it that we can do because Plan B is important, or else there is no plan, and then we're going to have to pick up the pieces, which is even worse. So I just wanted to make that statement, appreciate your efforts so far, and I'd love to continue working with you guys.
Thank you. We look forward to that. Are there any other questions?
Not a question, just a statement. Just, I know that I received this, someone said, about a month ago from Mark and Ryan in order to obtain some support from us on this, on our behalf. You know, and I'm glad that we took the time to to look this over because I know that there was some folks from other entities like the Lake Pillsbury Alliance and whatnot that had some comments, and I know it didn't really necessarily apply to the letter, it applied to the grant that you submitted for, some of the information there. And I don't know if that's in the comments or attached or anything, but I know it was submitted. But I think for us, I'm glad that we're talking about that extra verbiage. Matthew, thank you for presenting that for everyone, because I think a lot of times, and it's not pertaining to Calwild, there's other agencies that read what we do and how we comment, and they assume that we're just, yes, we are in agreement with everything that's happening because we're kind of writing a letter of support or something. So we have to keep emphasizing, well, our Plan A is this, but we know that possibly this may happen. So we were just in a recent meeting with another state agency that had stated, well, you agree with it, we've seen your letter. The letter, no, we don't agree with it. You know, we were told to comment this way because we weren't allowed to comment about keeping the dam. So like, we always have to emphasize that, and that's not to be radicals or anything like that. We just want to be specific so people know that, yeah, we know what's happening, possibly, but we're not totally in agreement, and we want to advocate for what we can, if there's a chance. So just wanted to highlight that.
Absolutely, thank you. I should also clarify something about the process here, which is that when we went to the Coastal Conservancy, for various internal reasons, they wanted this application to be on the agenda for their November 30th meeting. What that did was it gave us four days to put together an application, which was kind of a scramble, and there were some details that were inaccurate in that grant application. They weren't pivotal details, but there were some things that were commented on by the Potter Valley, I'm sorry, by the Lake Pillsbury Alliance, and they're correct, and we will correct those factual errors and move forward with the better understanding. But it was it was quite a few days in our office getting that together so that we could meet their deadline. They're meeting two days from now.
Supervisor Green?
I get where you're coming from, but I can't look at this as anything but Plan B turning into Plan A right before our eyes. And I appreciate the addition of a paragraph to clarify that we're not really supporting Plan B with no consideration of Plan A, but your grant proposal does that. There's nothing in your grant proposal that would do anything but facilitate discussions about what happens after the dam is removed. Although there's no history of advocacy on the question of dam removal, you know, what I see on the website sees a clear commitment to wild and scenic rivers, I don't see any expertise on considering alternatives to dam removal. So it's really hard for me, even though I support the idea that a Plan B should be at least studied. What's missing here is any effort that I'm aware of, that anybody is studying Plan A, that anybody has put a grant application together to put Plan A together. And I don't know, based on the sheer volume of letters and emails we get from the community up there, that is basically demanding this body to come up with a Plan A and to fight for the dam and to study things like partial decommissioning, fish passage projects, sediment removal, that would relieve the seismic issue. And I just don't know that this does this, and I also want to challenge the assertion that it's common knowledge and commonly accepted knowledge that whatever seismic safety issues that are going on with that dam have been vetted and discussed, that we can conclude that it is prohibitively expensive to even consider attempting repairs of that dam. And that may be a side issue to this grant application. I honestly think between P G and E and the Division of Dam Safety, some type of public disclosure needs to happen so that the public and this body can conclude whether it's a dead dodo so that this Plan B actually is the Plan A, and we should message it on that basis, or if there are opportunities for feasibility studies about partial decommissioning and moving around sediment removals to to at least flog some extra years out of that structure. So this is a tough one for me. I do acknowledge that Plan A is looking tougher by the day, but before we support a grant application for close to a half a million dollars to facilitate, am I getting that wrong?
It's a quarter.
Quarter mil- okay, only a quarter million compared to how many pennies have been allocated toward saving the dam.
I'd like to interrupt real quick. Cal, so we met with Calwild in, after writing the letter of Plan A and Plan B in order to move forward in figuring out what Plan B was. Calwild was not contacted to advocate for us for Plan A. We are doing our advocacy on our own. I just, I kind of want to check the tone from the board in the sense that Calwild is known for specific work. I have known Ryan for a while, him and I met up in the Cache Creek Wilderness in discussing some of the issues to the east of Clear Lake. We are looking at, and maybe I'm going to say too much, but we're looking at potential, if the dam comes down, we need a Lake Pillsbury 2.0, not a Lake Pillsbury is dead situation. So I just want to make sure that we're not saying, why are you not working with us on Plan A, when that was not the general concept of how we contacted Calwild and introduced each other to one another and started working towards this. Now, we didn't ask them to submit for the grant, that was separate, but at the same time, it fits within the concept of the conversations that we've had. So I would direct that to Supervisor Crandall and myself for the advocacy because there was never a request for them to advocate for Plan A, knowing that we were only having that communication and that relationship to set up for what Plan B would be like if Plan A fails. Plan A is different people, different, different partners and different concepts. This is, this is a complete separate track. So to blend in the advocacy for the dam staying there and having that conversation with Calwild, it's just, it's an improper conversation other than with those that are working on Plan A. I hope that helps to make sense.
Can I finish my comments, though? Thank you for that clarification.
Go ahead.
So tell me what the Plan A is, Russian River, what, Federation or whatever it is?
Our agenda item is the letter, and Matthew, you were going to add something.
Yeah, I felt Supervisor Sabatier well summarized the situation, but I did want to just state that, you know, I have a great deal of respect, of respect for the concerns that you're expressing, Supervisor Green, and very much appreciate your engagement on the topic, I think, you know, that we all do, and I don't want that to be missed either. And there are these multiple tracks that are occurring, and it is a complex and dynamic situation, and we're trying to be prepared on as many fronts of that as possible. And so that's why this item is before us today, is should the Plan B scenario prove inevitable, there are few partners that we could find better prepared than Calwild to ensure that it's the best possible Plan B. So, and that's the entirety of what this particular item addresses today, and I do appreciate the relevancy, the importance of the arguments that you're making as well. It's just that this is focused on the Plan B element specifically.
I wanted to say the same thing. Like, I felt like Mr. Rogers being proud of you with your comments, really. I was really happy with what you were saying. It's unfortunate that the Brown Act doesn't allow, like, us to talk to you about that and let you know what's happening with Calwild, but I, again, when you were talking, I was smiling, but I just knew that it wasn't, it wasn't them, that it's not their fault per se. But I, I think, hopefully, another group comes that needs to hear that, and we'll hope, we'll give you the chance to say those same things because I like what you said. Thank you, Supervisor Green, for saying your words, I appreciate them.
Hello, Ryan Henson, Policy Director with Calwild, and grew up around Valley and in Mendocino watershed, Van Arsdale. My dad worked at the mill there, right on the river. And, and you're right, Supervisor, we are a conservation group, we do support wild and scenic rivers, but we hadn't been involved in the overriver dam removal. And the reason that, we were drafted for this, actually, and you might ask who, it was Congressman Thompson. He's known me for years, and I started receiving mysterious texts saying you need to help Lake County. And I said, well, who is this? And so that's how it started, and I thought he was talking about the Cache Creek Wilderness, that Supervisor Sabatier and I had been working on, but it was actually the Eel. And he said, if, if the Eel River dams come out, he knows I'm the biggest Mendocino National Forest nerd on the planet, non-Forest Service nerd for the Mendocino. I love it, I've dedicated my life to exploring it, and I tried to listen to people very carefully. And we also like to craft ideas from what we say is from the grassroots up. And so that's, and that's why Congressman Thompson urged us to do this. He thought we would take our knowledge of the, of the Mendocino National Forest and our love for Lake and Mendocino counties and, and, and our love for working with people and try to craft something from the ground up with local stakeholders. And I, we had no plan to get involved here at all. In fact, this is a huge diversion. And we've never applied for a nickel. We've been around since 1976, the age of disco, and we've never applied for a nickel of government money before. This is our first ever government grant, this proposal to the Coastal Commission. It's shocking to hear it's a quarter million dollars, I know, but we need a project coordinator who can lead this facilitation process in a professional way and, and have it result in, obviously, we're not a government agency, so we have no binding authority, but we want it to result in a vision that, that we can sell to those who do have power, such as Senator Padilla, and of course Congressman Thompson and Congressman Huffman. And, and I was wondering if our friends, Frank, Frank Abely with the U.S. Forest Service, he manages the western side of the Mendocino, the Eel River watershed. I was wondering if he could say something?
Come on up, Frank.
Thank you for considering this.
Frank Abely, District Ranger for the Mendocino National Forest. Thank you, Chairman, and members of the board. I've worked on the Mendocino National Forest for 15 years now. I started as a hydrologist, I'm well aware of the resources up in the Pillsbury Basin. Before I comment on the proposal, I do want to go on record to say that the U.S. Forest Service does not have any authority or decision authority otherwise about the fate of Scott Dam or Van Arsdale Reservoir, nor do we have the authority to take any position on it. What we do have authority to do, and what we are charged to do, is make sure that whatever that decision is, all the resources that we manage are managed to the best possible way they can be managed. And those resources include recreation and, of course, fire suppression. I've been involved in this project from the very beginning, from when it was a relicensing, through a surrender, and now into the potential decommissioning of the project. And there has been a collaborative effort amongst multiple agencies when it comes to water supply and fish passage and fish habitat. What has received much less attention is recreation and fire suppression. And Forest Service believes that in order to address those issues in the event of a dam removal, the best possible solution has to be another collaborative effort. The Forest Service does not have the capacity to do this, and we also feel that we are better to be a participant than a facilitator. And so when we were approached by Ryan Henson with this, this idea of helping us facilitate the development of a vision plan, we were immediately very supportive. We've worked with Calwild for decades, and out of all the conservation groups we work with on all kinds of projects, we find them to be the most reasonable, the most logical, and the most cooperative and collaborative than any of them. So we're really happy to, to have Calwild on board to help us collaborate with all the agencies, tribes, and stakeholders up in the Pillsbury area and in Lake County to make sure that the resources are handled properly and that we can still provide quality recreation and fire suppression. So we support Calwild, we have written a letter of support for their grant, and I'm happy to answer any questions.
Thank you. Okay, I think we'll open it up to the public now. Have anyone here who wishes to give comment? You can come on up and state your name and have three minutes.
Bobby Dutcher at Lakeport. On July 11th, the five of you signed a letter, you know, to Mike Thompson regarding the thing of Lake Pillsbury, and in that said that their position, all the costs related to the above mitigation measures should be borne by P G and E. If P G and E is determined shutting down the project is in their interest, covering the costs and decommissioning, not further burdening California residents, is the least they can do. You know, we really supported that letter, and I still do. If, you know, this decommissioning process, if you do want to, you know, what life looks like after Lake Pillsbury, the cost, like, if you want to hire Calwild, that should be up to P G and E. You know, they've submitted their decommissioning plan, and it's still, it's open for public comment and input. Now, you're already hiring someone else to, or advocating for someone else to be hired with taxpayer dollars to be doing the thing that P G and E should be doing. So I think you should focus, focus on that right now. Once the decommissioning thing is, it's all over, then you could, I don't see the rush why this has to be done, like, immediately right now. I think this should be part of the decommissioning process. And in the letter, in the new letter that, you know, you're talking about submitting now, it says Calwild has never taken a public stance on dam removal, yet in their application, which is a public document, it says, the Eel River is a dwindling fishery which has been brought to near extinction by the presence of two dams and its upper drainage. They don't discuss climate change, the habitat degradation in the 50s and 60s from logging, invasive species that were introduced to the, to the rivers. There's, there's a lot of factors that went into the demise of salmon, but their application specifically says, these two dams are the total cause of the whole Eel River demise. Even the branches that have nothing to do with it, Eel River, Tomcay Creek, some other things, the people that go up there and count fish, they can't find fish anymore. Lake Pillsbury has nothing to do with those tributaries. So there's a lot more to it than that. And then, you know, if you're going to support this application, you know, just from, from the beginning to end, there's just, you know, multiple errors in this thing. Legislative district, I guess my state Assembly Speaker is Jim Wood, you know, I've voted for my Assembly member a couple times, and her name's not Jim. That's not, our Assembly representative for Lake County is not Jim Wood. It goes on to say also that it's a spectacularly beautiful area of redwood forests. There's not a single native redwood tree upstream from Van Arsdale. There's no redwood trees whatsoever. There are no redwood forests. You know, we're still talking about Lake County, we're not talking about Garberville. There's oak chaparral, you know, oak woodlands are like you see out on Highway 175 with oak trees and the grass underneath them. Chaparral is the brush up above them on the hillsides. So oak chaparral, I mean, I've worked in forestry for 25 years, I've never even heard that term before, they're two different things. And riparian forest, you know, riparian vegetation is usually willow trees.
Your time is up.
Well, they've got, they all had unlimited time.
I know. Well, it was not public comment with their presentation, but how much more do you have to?
Oh, not much. Oh, anyway, I would not.
Why don't you just finish?
Yeah, I would, I do not support you sending this letter out. I think there's plenty of time later on. This application is badly flawed, the amount, the miles of spawning habitat, they're saying it's 280 miles, I think, I've never heard that before, even the advocates of it. And I know a couple of supervisors did sign on as advocates for this with the list that they had, but other than that, it reads like a who's who of Northern California dam haters, you know, California trout, the Sierra Club, Friends of Eel River, you know, their mission of life seems to want to take dams down, and there's not very many groups, I know, I'll make sure that. I'll make sure the Chamber of Commerce doesn't support it. But yeah, I still, you still need to keep fighting for the dam. You know, Plan A has got to be our focus. You know, in 1912, one time, you know, Board of Supervisors didn't pay attention to our water rights. Yolo County wound up with them. That day forward, that's all they were known for. So unless you fight for Lake Pillsbury as hard as you can going forward, that's what this board will be known for, be the board that lost Lake Pillsbury. So yeah, I don't support this thing, you guys sending this letter in. Thank you.
Thank you.
Bobby, just real quick, we signed on to bring it to the board. We didn't sign on to the letter just yet. We brought this agenda item to discuss the letter. It wasn't necessarily to approve it until we brought it here. So just letting you know, because I know you mentioned that at the end.
Well, if you're going to support it, you're, yeah, you're, I would not again.
Oh, no, no. Well, you mentioned that we signed on to it. We just signed on to bring it to the board. We didn't sign on to approve it per se.
Well, the application has your name in it.
You have to come up, we'll get you up to the.
Paragraph 12. Project was or will be planned, meaning from community engagement and broad community groups. At this time, we have received oral expressions of support from California Trout, Friends of Eel River, Bruno Sabatier, and E.J. Crandall.
Yeah, no, I know that they did ask in an email for an oral, that's, did I give you oral support already if you can come to the microphone? Because I don't remember giving oral support or?
If not, it was certainly a misunderstanding on my part. My understanding was that when we met for the EcoFlight over the upper drainage, that we had a conversation with both of you supervisors in which you said that you supported the idea of the project and wanted to see it go forward. If I misunderstood that, then that's on me.
This is regarding for the actual grant?
No, it was for the project. The grant is the means to the end of the project.
Okay. Because I do know also that there was another email sent to me asking for for me to approve verbally or give some sort of a statement that I do, and I couldn't without the letter.
Right. That was a request for you to confirm your verbal support.
Right. And I couldn't do that.
Okay. I understand then that that's the case. We had been asked for that by members of the Coastal Conservancy staff. So.
So can you speak to the inaccuracies in the application? I know you mentioned them generally before, but those were some of the items that I was concerned about too?
Yes. We had a rush. We had to pile this thing together in a matter of days. And we're working on a lot of other stuff throughout the state and there are only eight of us on staff for the organization. So a lot of it fell to me and I would, I did research. I contacted our policy staff. I did as much due diligence as I could, but there are some details that are apparently inaccurate. I know that the word redwoods should have been pulled out of the version that got submitted to the Conservancy because, no, we're very clear, there are no redwoods in that area. But that is, I take responsibility for any inaccuracies that are in the application. But the description of the project is completely accurate. That being that we will engage those members of the community, stakeholders, tribes that have an interest of whatever side in relation to what happens if the dams come out. It really is, this is more like an insurance policy. It's like, okay, you're going to fight like hell to get the dam preserved. But if not, you have this insurance policy of these additional projects and possibly some of those projects could be implemented whether or not the dams come out. What we've learned from the Conservancy is that there's quite a lot of funding floating around right now between the infrastructure bill and the Inflation Reduction Act and bond funds that have been approved at the state level. And Lake County should get its share of those. So this process will establish a project list that will then present that opportunity.
And our Assembly member, you can add her too.
Okay, well, of course, of course. Sure.
Can you clarify? Because I glommed on the page three of this supplement. I saw a total project budget of 470-plus K. I was told the grant application is for some lesser amount. So if I'm going to be driving a six-digit nail in the coffin of Scott Dam, my question is, what are we supporting? This grant application for a share of this half million dollars? And have you identified other revenue sources? Is there going to be a later ask for the county itself or the watershed protection district?
There will not. I can guarantee that. The most likely sources include PG&E, as the gentleman stated. PG&E morally, in my opinion, is doing this on the cheap and has a responsibility to Lake County in order to make it whole. So we will be talking and we'll be seeking other sources as well. We have a list of identified possible sources. But because this was front-loaded to the November 30th meeting of the Conservancy, this is the first funding application that has come forward.
So with this grant, if for some reason the dam stays, what happens to this grant?
To the grant? Well, we still do the project. The dam isn't going to come out before the project will be over.
I think you said it best where it can still be utilized to help upgrade what's there currently, because what's there has been kind of an organic growth, not an economic development plan. And here there would be a plan that we can blend into what's still going to stay there if Plan A is successful. If Plan B is not, then we have that plan to look at entirely. So I see it as not a waste and a good way for us to make sure that we can move forward.
I just wanted to ask in that format to make sure, so if people, you know, are tuning in, that if the dam stays, you're still going to get the grant funding for the same purpose?
Yes, yes, for the same purpose. To engage the community and identify particularly in the recreation and fire resiliency areas, things that they see as beneficial and that they'd like to see. Mountain biking trails, for example, is something that I know the Mendocino Forest doesn't really have any of and could really use. So these are, this is to create opportunities for the future.
So but the timeline on this work, when is it set to begin?
January.
Okay, January. And so we're not going to have any idea about the Plan A before this work starts. So it's, this is going to either be prior to or congruent?
Parallel, yeah.
Parallel.
Right, parallel.
Which was the entire plan in the first place is not to one, fail, choose the next, is to have parallel tracks?
Right. Okay.
Are there any other questions?
I'm going to see if there's anyone else in the public who wishes to give comment. Do we have anyone else in the chambers or in the Zoom room?
Yeah, we have iPhone 7431.
Okay, go ahead iPhone. And please state your name and you'll have three minutes.
Star six.
Star six to unmute. Okay, try speaking? Carol, you can unmute, state your name, and you'll have three minutes.
This is Carol Sinqueeny. I'm one of the directors for the Lake Pillsbury Alliance. This is quite a lively meeting. I wanted to say that the idea of a vision for the Lake Pillsbury Basin is good and we can support that. I'd like to believe that this would be done and implemented whether it's removal of the dam or that the dam stays. But what's most important for us to convey is we feel a bit caught in the middle. The grant application itself omitted or misrepresented the community that is there. And I'm bringing this up because I want the public to be aware. The application mentioned a small number of homeowners that live in a single development adjacent to the lake is incorrect. There are three residential tracts, 300 homes, properties, and two businesses in the basin. Many of these are longstanding, multi-generational families. And we are probably outnumbered by the sheer number of recreational visitors that come to the forest, particularly in the summer months. Like Bobby Dutcher, we disagree with the 288 linear miles of spawning grounds. The entire upper Mainstamale River watershed above Scott is 288 square miles with about 30 to 40 potential, 30 to 40 river miles of potential fish habitat. We are concerned, extremely concerned about fire. Lake Pillsbury has a long history of providing water for aerial and ground attacks to fight wildfires in the basin and beyond. The mention of identification of new facilities if needed, quote-quote, is concerning to us. Their biggest concern is that somehow we will not be included in the conversation. And we feel that would be very unfair and inappropriate. We want to work and continue to work with your board, with Calwild, with the Forest Service, and anyone else that truly wants to address the future of the Lake Pillsbury Basin. We do not support dam removal, but if it proceeds, I think it is essential that we work together to create a vision for the headwaters that takes into consideration the Lake Pillsbury stakeholders as they will be the most directly impacted by the future of the Potter Valley project. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Thank you for your comments. Were her comments noted for corrections in the application with the population? Okay. We have to trust you because we're not going to have a chance to see the application before it's.
She emailed us with all of those comments in writing.
Okay.
So we already have those purposes of correcting our information.
Okay. And so when the application is corrected, can you please send it to Matthew and we'll be able to have a record of it? Okay. Do we have anyone else in the Zoom room?
Yeah, iPhone again.
Okay. Okay. iPhone user?
7431.
7431. Unmute. And it looks like you're unmuted?
No.
You trying to speak?
Yeah, it's not working.
Okay, Frank Lynch. You can unmute and you'll have three minutes.
You have not entered any numbers.
Hello?
Yes, we can hear you. Go ahead Frank.
Hi, this is Frank Lynch. I'm also from the Lake Pillsbury Alliance. And I appreciate all the comments made by, actually everyone there. I think all of them have validity to a certain extent. We do have concerns about some of the information in the grant application and those concerns have been noted. I guess the bottom line is, I again push for the Plan A, but I'm also a realist that there may be a need for a Plan B. And if that does come to pass, then I would encourage all the entities, Lake County, the Forest Service, and everyone to think very big. And this is kind of a continuing theme that I've had with conversation with people in that this is a multi-million dollar, if not in total, when it's all said and done, billion-dollar project, when you're considering all the water needs that will need to be developed for the Russian Riverside ultimately and dam removal remediation, et cetera. And Lake County deserves its fair share and the Lake Pillsbury Basin deserves its recognition and fair share. So again, thank you for the time.
Thank you Frank. Okay, are we going to try the iPhone one more time? iPhone user, can you, 7431, can you try star six please?
Hello?
Oh, there you are.
Yes.
Great.
Here I am. This is a, probably a familiar voice, Melissa Fulton. I was a resident of Lake County and for over 30 years. And even though I've been retired for a couple of years, I stay in touch with Lake County through the two chambers, Board of Supervisors, meetings, et cetera. I was somewhat, somewhat happy with the comments from Calwild, but I think that the Lake County Board of Supervisors, in support of the residents of Lake County and the Pillsbury area in particular, needs to support only Plan A with a, with much less emphasis on Plan B. This has been going on for a long time. I first became aware of it in 2019 and brought it to the attention of the Lake County Board of Directors as I was CEO at the time. There is a great concern for all of Lake County and the negative impacts if that dam, if those dams are removed. And I would think that a thorough research and investigation of the cost of making the repairs needs to be undertaken. I think that that should be uppermost as far as efforts from the County of Lake. I do agree that PG&E bears the expense or should be bearing the expense of what they have done or have set in motion. And I was horrified when I attempted to join one of Representative, or Congressman Huffman's meetings and his staff told me I was not allowed to. Luckily Supervisor Crandall has been included in those. And in truth, I don't know if those meetings are still going on, but it just appears that more effort needs to be focused on Plan A. And it would be interesting if this letter of support, as it's been amended, could be moved forward to another meeting of the supervisors. And I do understand that that is beyond this November 30th deadline that seems to be so imperative to Calwild. So again, my love for Lake County goes on. And I think that it's very important that this item, this issue, needs to have further investigation from all sides.
Thank you.
And I appreciate, I appreciate the time you've given me. Thank you. And I will stay tuned.
Okay, thank you Melissa. Do we have anyone else? No. Okay.
Just one more thing to clarify.
I'm just going to close public comment.
Okay.
Okay, go ahead.
Okay. So in going back, because now I've realized, you know, our flight with Calwild, and I want to go back a little bit because at one time, I want to say, closer towards like June, May, we've been meeting with Congressman Thompson. He's been actually talking with us, advocating for us in regards to the Scott Dam, Lake Pillsbury situation. In doing so, agencies are like asking for his support left and right, and he always refers them straight back to Lake County. In these discussions, after a while, he started connecting us with groups like Calwild, the, what is it, the Rocky Mountain Elk Group, other agencies that have to do with restoration and whatnot. And it's not to submit and go that route as if we are giving up. It is to have something intact on the side. And that's what he's always said. We understand, he understands our stance, but recommended that we have these discussions in case that it did happen. And so we did go on that flight. And that was, I could see how there was a thought that yes, with this grant application, there was complete support. My agreement to Congressman Thompson to meet with all, with you all was just to what we were doing. My agreement to Congressman Thompson to meet with you all was just to what we were doing. So I apologize if I gave any type of, you know, thought that I was just like fully supportive, but I, you know, I know that everyone's watched my stance on this completely in dealing with Eel, Eel Russian River Commission, Potter Valley Two Basin Solution, the NOI parties, now the Russian River Water Forum, and now here we are with this. And so I just wanted to emphasize that because I could tell, again, that there's also limitations between us giving you information, Supervisor Green, with the Brown Act intact. So I could see how it's frustrating at times, and there's a lot of different issues that we deal with as supervisors were. It's like, wait, I'm just hearing about this? And it's those limitations that put us in the situation at times. So, but I just wanted to highlight the encouragement that Congressman Thompson's been giving us in regards to Plan, having a Plan B and things like that. So just wanted to give that information.
Quick follow-up. Can you elaborate? Just because it's unclear to me.
Yeah.
Obviously, I have to respect the people that are on point, and I have to respect the process or processes.
Yeah.
And so it's unclear to me if this is a standalone thing, if it's integrated with the Russian River Water Forum, which is doing its own investigations or programs or something like that. So like whither the forum if this is approved?
Do you want to answer that? Would you, because from what I understand, this is a standalone. This has nothing to do with Russian River--
This is a standalone project, and the idea was that it would be a standalone project so that there wouldn't be any politicking around it, that it would simply be an opportunity for people to come together and express what their interests and concerns and vision was. The, we would invite representatives of the forum to participate in the engagement, but they're not in any way formally related to managing the project or anything like that. Does that make sense?
No.
It doesn't? Okay. Can you ask it again?
Can I, can I help to clarify? Again, this, so we drafted that letter, Plan A, Plan B. We submitted that over to Congressman Thompson, and as we sat down with him, and he's asking us, what have you created to fulfill Plan B? Obviously, Plan A, he knows what exactly we're working on, but are you just calling it a Plan B and not creating a plan? And so he provided some people for us to connect with. We connected with Calwild. This is all unilaterally from Lake County, looking into crafting a Plan B in case Plan A falls through. And I see this in a similar way as, and maybe it's a horrible analogy, but here I go. People who were fully against cannabis when all they wanted was 50 feet of buffer. Well, had you sat down at the table with us and offered 50 feet of buffer, we would have given that to you, but since you didn't want anything at all, and eventually it passed, you didn't get any of what you wanted. Well, we have to prepare for getting something that we need rather than nothing at all. Because PG&E, if you look at the decommissioning plan, is not giving us anything at all unless we continue to fight. We're going to continue to fight for no dam removal, but on the dam removal, what it looks like is utter crap left in Lake Pillsbury area. So we have to craft a Plan B while simultaneously doing Plan A. I want to speak to Frank and Carol. They are absolutely advocates of Plan A. We sit with them during the Russian River Forum. They provided a presentation alongside of us. I'm not sure if they're aware, but that presentation we did, which was either September 7th or October 7th--
October 7th.
I forget which one it was, dislodged a whole new level of conversation that Supervisor Crandall and I have been involved in, which was advocating for Plan A, saying, here's something that you're not thinking about, that you're going to really mess up your environment further than just the impacts on Lake County. So we are seeing Plan A create new conversation and new contacts for us. And so--
But not through the Russian River Water Forum.
That was at the Russian River Water Forum that we made those presentations, and we were provided feedback from the Russian River Forum, saying, you have completely changed the conversation. And I'm not sure what you're looking from me, other than I can't control about whether a dam comes up or come down, other than continue to fight.
What am I supposed to make of the forum process now? Because basically, it's all Eel River interest. They've dropped their plan with PG&E. It's a dam-busting plan as far as Scott Dam goes. So if we're engaged with the forum, is that where Plan A lives now?
No.
Okay. Where does Plan A live?
Right here in Lake County. Because we're the only ones fighting for Plan A, other than Lake Pillsbury Alliance. No one else cares what happens to Lake County, if you want me to be blunt.
Well, to be honest, we do. That's why we're here.
And I take that back. We have gotten some great support from Congressman Thompson. Prior to Congressman Thompson becoming our congressman again in this area, we were not getting, we did get a letter from Garamendi, but having the level of contact that we have currently, the level of contact is immense as far as the conversation about Lake Pillsbury. So I, I don't know, it's basically a concept of, do you want to prepare for two possibilities while continue to push for one, or do you not want to prepare and read what PG&E is preparing for us, which is not what I want?
And since you took some time to clarify your stance, I'm going to take a moment to clarify mine. I'm not opposed to Plan B planning.
Yeah.
If there's good information that everyone has seen and everyone agrees on that the dam is toast, it seems premature to do this because I don't have any certainty that a Plan A has been crafted, much less any grant application or funding that would support a Plan A pursuit. What we have is very recently PG&E dropping its decommissioning plan, and the only differentiation is between a one-year pullout and a phased reduction. I don't know that Calwild has any interest or expertise in things other than dam removal and community visioning on that process. So I want to, I want to support this, but it, absent more information as to the scope and the practicality or the feasibility of any Plan A proceeding, this feels to me like the white flag being waved. And I don't know why others shouldn't feel that way, so.
Go ahead.
Yeah, just, obviously, very complicated issue, but we've talked about it. We know what Plan A is. We don't want the dam to come down. The reality is, we need to have a Plan B, and I think this is a step. We run them concurrently. Obviously, we're going to have many, many other discussions before this happens, but yeah, I'm in support of this letter today, obviously wishing there was a different outcome that we were pushing towards at this point, but we talked about it. We need to have different options working to continue the struggle that we're going through right now. So I'm in support of it.
Yeah.
In support of the work that the committee's done, and Matthew and everyone else on all these conversations we're having, and yeah, we don't want the dam to come down. That's very clear from this board's standpoint, but we've got to fight, and we've got to figure out how we're going to move through that fight.
Right. But I do want to address the comment of a white flag, because we're nowhere near that. We have all been resolved in our commitment with Plan A, and we have two supervisors and staff and our congressman that are advocating constantly. And you might not know everything that's happening, but that's the nature of how a board works. But we do have conversations from time to time here in closed session. So without getting into any of that, we have to, we have to be strategic in our planning. We have to have a Plan B. We can't wait, because then we're behind the ball, as what's happened in Siskiyou. We have a prime example from Supervisor Valenzuela, who's been through this, who understands, who said they didn't do enough pre-planning. And that's a colleague that has direct experience with this process. I think it's prudent to take that advice. I think it's prudent to do this planning. It's contingency planning. Hopefully, we don't need it, but there will be pieces that come out that can be useful. And I mean, it's, it's the same with all disaster planning. We have to plan for all of the things, even though they may not happen. So I'm in full support. I appreciate everything that you both do on this, because we, we don't have better advocates right now than the two of you, because you are fighting as hard as you possibly can for this dam and for Lake Pillsbury. So I don't think that any way we are conceding. We're not. We're just contingency planning.
I think an analogy for me is, the fight for the whole situation is in a stadium. These guys are just asking to sell a vendor outside of the stadium is really kind of, I mean, I don't know if that, does that make sense? I mean, it's not as if, if the dam doesn't come, if it doesn't come down, you're still there doing this.
Only got beer and peanuts in the first--
That's, that's my analogy. Yeah, yeah. Sorry.
They had to go to baseball.
Okay.
Yeah. Let's see. So the changes are--
Noted.
Noted? All right. Let's see here. Let me go to it real quick and, okay, I got it. Why am I, oh no, it's a timed item. There we go. Sorry. Okay. Madam Chair, I will move to approve the consideration of a letter for Calwild State Coastal Conservancy Grant Funding Request to support Upper Eel Watershed Community Visioning Process with the addition of the new verbiage, and also to request that Calwild submits their improvement, or not their improvements, but the corrections of the grant description and narrative.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
No.
Okay. I think the last--
Dick, Matthew.
Item that we have is calendars. We have a 3 o'clock, so let's move quickly through calendars. Who wants to start?
I got it. I have a pick count committee on Thursday, cultural awareness through NACO on Thursday, strategic planning meeting for, can't think of the term, COC. I also have an ambulance ordinance meeting on this Friday, and Middle Creek Project Committee on Monday, the 4th, meeting with our CAO and preparing for Tuesday. There will be the Christmas parade over in the city of Clear Lake on Saturday, the 2nd. It starts at 6:00 PM, the light parade, and please come on down and enjoy. It is, the holiday season is upon us, and I'll leave it there.
Supervisor Crandall?
Yeah, so tomorrow, I'll be at the Hitch Summit, Robinson Rancheria. Then Thursday, I think there's another, there's another portion of that, the summit. Yeah, it's a two-day deal. Friday, I know I have a meeting in the morning. It's not ringing a bell, but I do know in the afternoon I'll be meeting with the tax collector and another constituent on Friday. Saturday, the Christmas parade in Upper Lake is at 6:00 PM. I'll be attending that. It's like a light parade that they drive down Main Street, and people connect lights to their cars, and then it's a real fun time. People throw candy. You couldn't believe, how do they get those lights on there? They plug in like a generator or something like that?
It's a battery.
Yeah. Oh, sorry. Then we have, I have my ad hoc climate finance, social inclusion for the EPA committee meeting, and then the Middle Creek at 10:30, Middle Creek Restoration Project, then back here on Tuesday.
So I have the Hitch Summit tomorrow. Thursday, I will see. I did get a jury summons notice, so I got a call on Wednesday night. So Supervisor Green, I don't know if you want to attend on the 30th. I can let you know on that, but I won't be making the second day. I got the first day.
Closer to the light.
Oh, sorry. Sorry, Sam. So Hitch Summit tomorrow at Robinson, and then 30th, like I said, I'll check and see if I got my jury duty on Thursday, but I'm not going to be going to the 30th anyway, so if you want to attend that, Supervisor Green. On the 3rd, Lower Lake is having its, right?
On Sunday.
It's on the 3rd, the street fair. It's during the day, not in the evening. I think it's 10 to 2, if I'm right--
Yep.
--is what that is, so come on out and enjoy that. So two, you know, parades all around the county, it sounds like. So a good holiday weekend, starting that out back here at the board. I do have some travel. I will not be here next, next week. I'm going to be traveling to DC for the White House Summit of Tribal Nations. I'm going to travel to that meeting. So I will be leaving town. I'll be back on the 8th, and then Christmas in Middletown on the 9th, so then back here at the board on the 11th.
Thank you. I met with Scotch Valley Community Advisory Council last night. Good meeting. They won't be meeting in December, so our next meeting will be in January. We'll get a couple appointments done in the next week or two and get some new officers elected in January. Yeah, I'll be on standby if you need any fill-in support at the summit. I would like to remind myself and those who may have heard about it, that just like last year's summit, it's, it's structured as an intergovernmental consultation, and that's very lawful and important to have those conversations, but it's not open to the public, and it's not going to have reported actions to the public. And there were a couple crossed wires on that subject last year, so I just want a message for myself and everyone else. This is going to be a big two-day summit, but it's not a public summit. Friday, I'll be out at the emergency shelter, watching the transition. We'll be having Redwood Community Services take over on that date, and thankfully, Blue Horizons will staff for the overnight shift to get them up and running in the morning, and very excited to have them come onboard and activate the next iteration of the shelter. And I think, I think I can leave it at that. Thank you.
Tomorrow morning, agenda review, and then I have constituent meeting in Kelseyville. I have a meeting with the Nature Conservancy about Bog's Lake Preserve and the maintenance there. And Thursday, meeting with the fire chief, Lake County Resilience Centers meeting, and the Recreation JPA. And then Friday is Christmas in the country in Kelseyville, and you'll be able to view the Hospice Festival of Trees that evening. I've already decorated my tree, and so I'll be at the Festival of Trees Saturday night, where we're going to auction off trees and raise money for hospice. There is the Holiday Fiddler's Jam on Sunday at Eli. Monday, I have my meeting with CAO Parker, then the grant, last grant meeting for the RC grant that we looked at earlier, and then in that, that evening is meeting at the KBA, and then back on Tuesday. Okay. So that does it for us for our open session. We do have a few closed session items that we're going to get to, so I will read those 8.1, 3:00 PM, public employee appointment pursuant to government code section 54957B1, interviews for public health services director, appointment of health services director, and 8.2, conference with legal counsel, existing litigation pursuant to government code section 54956.9D1, FERC project number 77, Potter Valley Hydroelectric Project. Okay, thank you for joining us, and--
Check.
We're going to move into closed session.